But it's under control and I think he feels that he'll do what he has to do. He's not in pain from shortness of breath, et cetera, et cetera. He's gotta go through certain procedures and he feels that that's the best, so.
That's true.
The best.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to remove anything from the consent agenda? All right, hearing no one, the consent agenda is approved. Thank you, report of the chair. I don't have a report tonight, Superintendent's report.
Yes, hi, we have a busy meeting. I'll start with correspondence. I will send you two pieces of correspondence. We received this today. This is the S E E C complaint and they are asking that we submit a report, which I will do, with our counsel and...
I'd like to see that before it goes on.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. And I do want to let you know that everything that went out was approved by our attorney and we checked many things with the S E E C. So, we are working on that, so that just came today. The other thing that also came today out of the press is a letter from, um, to parents, Karen Wire and Julie Stewart. And I had already sent that to you, I had Debbie send that to you online, so you have that correspondence. Okay, we have, um, I'm gonna start with Don. Don just wants to quickly, is Don here? Oh, there he is. Don would just like to quickly talk to you about a, um, employee that he spoke about with the facilities committee.
Um, we have an opportunity to cost-avoid some mechanical service contract charges by hiring out a part-time employee for twenty-five dollars an hour, a thousand hours a year, whereas presently we spent in the neighborhood of sixty to sixty-five thousand dollars last year to do the same work. If I were able to get this part-time employee coupled with the plumber and the electrician I have on staff, we would be able to save about forty of that sixty-five thousand dollars.
Don, what kind of work does this person do?
Um, I'd like to put him on as a general maintenance grounds and maintenance employee, but his skills are in mechanical services, um, air conditioning, heating. We presently don't have those skills in our in-house and we paid in excess of sixty-five thousand dollars last year for it. So, with the potential of twenty-five thousand this year, we could reduce that cost.
Phil?
Two questions, will this person get benefits?
No, no ma'am. This person is retired, has the full benefit package, and doesn't want any more than twenty hours a week.
Excellent. And, um, what section of the budget would he come out of? Um, the three hundreds? I mean...
I suspect Bob will have to...
Or the far...
This person...
Bob is not feeling well. It's wherever they have contracts.
Salaries and contracts.
Maintenance contracts.
Maintenance contracts. We pay maintenance.
Well, my existing money is in maintenance contracts.
Right, that's where it would come from. You may have to move it, but that's the money.
Sounds like a great idea.
I'm sorry, anyone else? This person won't be doing custodial work, will he?
Uh, not custodial, maintenance work, maybe landscaping and we'll, we'll get the benefit of a thousand hours a year, so, um, heating, air conditioning, maintenance around the schools, you know, just like any one of my maintenance people. He could be cutting grass, he could be changing light bulbs or putting batteries in closets and other things, but the bulk of the work is to do mechanical work that we're presently paying outside sources for.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just gonna say, the facilities committee met, discussed this earlier this evening, we voted unanimously to recommend to the board that we engage this person. In addition to being able to dispatch these, these needs more efficiently and less expensively, we'll also get additional hours that we're currently, otherwise, for basically the same price that it's costing us to do these other services, for a lot less, we'll get that plus additional hours. There's actually some, some good hours coming into us from this, so it's act, it's a no-brainer. I mean, we should definitely do this.
What Greg tried to say is that presently, for that money, that we get about three hundred hours a year. And now for a half-time person, it'll be a thousand hours a year for, I consider, a third of all the pay. So, we have the opportunity to fill that time with landscaping and other things that we can use.
All right, I just, Greg, you're comfortable that there's no issue with the custodial contract by hiring this person?
No, this is, uh, I...
We've done it before, we have the electrician with them.
Yeah, all right.
Michelle?
I was just gonna say, this, um, you have confidence that this person is familiar with the different kind of units at all of our different building?
Yes, um, yes, they've been working in our school staff for fifteen years.
Okay.
And also?
Oh, uh, and obviously this has to be, if we move to go forward with it, one other piece of it is, is obviously that has to be vetted by our, our counsel. We worked for a couple of issues that I don't wanna discuss. You'd have to take it to the executive session.
All right, well, can you give this person's name, or does...
Could I ask another question?
Yes.
I'm really glad that you're bringing it to the board, but do we really need to vote on this? You don't need a motion or anything, do you?
I don't think so.
This is just informational? So, you don't need to do anything much more than say, thanks a lot?
If you're asking me, Bob suggested that I, I get the board's approval to, to add a half.
I would think that we should have board approval. It's a new position. The board should vote on it quick, I think. Unless others insist on it. Greg, I'll move that we, we approve the creation of this staff.
Twenty hours per week, twenty-five dollars per hour, a thousand hours per year, those are the maximums.
As, that's right, as outlined by, by Mr. Overhead. All right, your second?
Second.
Michelle, second, is there any further discussion?
Well, yeah, I am confused as to why we're voting on this, because we try to ti-tow away sometimes from micromanaging. And I would think if it's a good hire and the superintendent thinks it is, isn't that enough said? I mean, I'm kinda curious why Bob asked, other than just informational. It's, there's money in the budget and we're not running under or over our new budget, which of course we haven't yet, um, I don't know.
It's the hiring, to me, it's the, it's the creation of a new position. I mean, is the administration authorized to just hire people under new, for new positions without board authority? I think that's a bit of work. Anyone? I'm sorry, Michelle?
Oh, I'm assuming this, um, oh no, it's part-time, so there would be no benefits associated.
No benefits.
All right.
And it would be subject to the approval of our counsel, it's why I believe in any of those contracts.
Correct.
Okay.
Move, move to approve? It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Raise your hand. Any abstaining? All right, passes, thank you, Don. Thank you. Good luck.
Okay, thank you. One of the topics that has come up over the last, I don't know, two or three months has been the high school and what we're going to do to make the high school attract families and new students and how we're gonna prepare students for life after high school, which is really our job. I'm glad to say that all of the board members were able to see the TV studio and it's fabulous and it's gonna be a wonderful pathway for kids. We have Karen Files going to Nogita in June to make connections with their teachers for automotive and those other industrial classes. And Mrs. Gallo is just gonna do a quick presentation to just kinda give you a little summary of where we were, where we are, and to really think back, a lot has gone on over the last two years at the high school that we really had nothing to do with. S-BAC, the new teacher eval, the Common Core, we brought in Power School, we, you know, have everyone on laptops, we have kids with Chromebooks. So, a lot has gone on. So, we really wanted to just let you know that it's in our minds, we're really working on it, and Kim is gonna do a fast, real presentation.
Hand brush.
Mrs. Gallo.
You're each gonna get a handout as I, as I go through this, but I wanna get started because I realize we have a very busy agenda tonight. The initiatives that were successfully implemented in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen are a formidable list. As you look down at the, at the first page of the handout that you have, Common Core State Standards, Smarter Balance, Northwest Evaluation Association, let me just point out that that's a very exciting new thing for our school system that provides us with data, and I'll talk just a little bit more about that. CED is another state initiative. We have our first scientific research-based intervention committee and that is underway and that comes from directly related to the NWA data. And we're also preparing for our NEASC decennial review. Ms. Files will tell you more about the Chromebook initiative. If you turn to the second page, I tried to take each of these initiatives and just explain them a little bit more to you. Rigorous curriculum have been written, are complete in the courses that you see here. Twenty-four courses completed, full curriculum entered in our, our software, Atlas Rubicon, and that's in English Language Arts, Social Studies, World Language, and Technology. What does this mean? And, um, Mrs. DeBrito currently has underway several more subjects, math, science, and the other electives that are going to happen from right now as we speak into the summer, so that we have completely taken our curriculum, looked at it, made sure it's rigorous, made sure it aligns with the Common Core, and that teachers have a buy-in to the process of saying, this is how it's done. It's, it's no longer curriculum by person or curriculum by, this is what I like to teach. It's a part of a larger framework that does not take teacher autonomy away, but assures kids that when you leave this classroom, there are certain concepts that you know are able to do and you've been assessed on them. Smarter Balance Assessment was administered successfully to grades six, seven, and eight. Eleven started today. Happy to report that the largest majority of our juniors did come to school today, and I don't say that lightly. Our juniors have had lots of tests in the past, they're, they're worried about SATs, they're worried about getting into colleges, and they're taking a field test for no other reason than to help future students get a better test. A field test is where the process is vetted. This is not new. Kids have a field test every single year in the cap, but it's very evident when it's the only thing that you're, reason why you're testing for this next two weeks. Some of our juniors, to be frank, weren't too thrilled about that. I've had some very nice conversations with parents and Mrs. DeBrito has supported me on that, to assure parents that we're going to have as least, as little disruption to the high school environment as possible. However, it's something that we are bound to, as good citizens and educators, to take part in this, to make education better in the future. So, I'm very pleased about the Smarter Balance experience that we're giving to our children and also the fact that they have answered their call to citizenship by coming to school. Other high schools have not been so lucky. There's an amazing amount of kids getting sick in other high schools on testing days. Must be the plague. Northwest Evaluation Association, the NWA, this is data for individual students that is standardized at the high school level. This is not that easy to come by and I'm told, I'm not as familiar with the Blue Ribbon Program, but I'm, I'm told that this is more, it's more user-friendly and it's adjusted to each student. For instance, now, this is being used for reading and math for our secondary students, grade six through eleven. If I'm on the test and I get to a point where I can't, I, I'm not getting, I'm getting a bunch of wrong answers, the question stops for me. The next student, who is a very, very bright student and really has no problem with the questions I just had trouble with, goes on further. It's an adaptive test on computer and it's also standardized data. If, if we continue to measure our success only by classroom grades, then we're never gonna get anything different than what we already have. So, this is a very, very important initiative and I'm very pleased about it, yes.
I was just wondering if that information is shared with the students?
Absolutely.
It is?
Absolutely, it's shared with the students. In the, in the classrooms, that, all the teachers have reports on it and they, they use that. Are you, are you asking for like an individual report for each student?
I'm...
Because that doesn't happen right now.
Oh, it doesn't? So, the, so the, the student who took the test doesn't actually know how they did on it? Or have a benchmark of...
They do because it's shared in classrooms. Now, how, how it's shared is, is going to vary from classroom to classroom, but teachers are using the data to inform instruction. So, they do know how they did. What context they put that in the classroom will depend upon how you hear about it at home as parents. Our SRBI process is for our struggling students and again, it's a standardized process when a student is struggling, so that we don't immediately go to what special ed service, what special service should we throw at this student? And some students need that and I, I totally respect that, but it's not the first step. There are many steps along the way to ensure that we're giving students the least restrictive education. SRBI is, assures that and we've also implemented guided study, which is going to take a more specialized view next year in reading labs and math labs, because that's where the students need the most help. So, these are very, very powerful strategies to ensure that our students who are struggling have the assistance that they need. You go to the next page, NEASC is the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, you've heard me talk about it. Well, we're, we're not just talking about it, our committees are formed, a lot of data is gathered, we're putting student work samples in evidence boxes, and this is our way of self-studying in the year leading up to the, to the actual decennial, decennial review on these six standards, and these are six very important standards. I'm not gonna read them to you, but I'm happy to talk about any aspect of it about which you may have questions. Ms. Files, again, will talk to you more about the Chromebook initiative and the impact it's had in our classrooms. During this year, at the beginning of this year, we implemented a research-based grading practice that includes the use of formative, interim, and summative. There is a description on our webpage, both webpages, the middle and the high school, that talk about the difference between a formative and interim and a summative assessment. This is especially important in a year that we implemented Parent Portal, because we've taken the grade books out of the dark ages. In the past, a grade book was a teacher's personal property and it was seen, you know, it was kinda this holy grail that nobody got to look at. That doesn't really help students to know where they are in the learning process. This is an open process. So, how can we do this in a way that informs students and their families about how they're doing? Formative, interim, and summative comprise a skill thread that says, you introduce these concepts to students and you teach them these basic concepts, then, those are your formative assessments. You have a lot of those during the course of the school year. They can be homework assignments, they can be, um, enter it when you walk in, do now exercises, they can be exit slips, so that the teacher has immediate information about how did the kids do today. Formative assessments are very important, they should lead to a measurement of the, of some content, of some skill that we are now testing. Did we take all this formative information and turn it into something? Can we do something with that information? We must measure it so that we know that, so, and that is what leads to the formative event, in, um, the formative practice of giving a big test, giving a big practice. It should be an authentic experience that says, okay, we've taught you these skills, we've taught, we've put them into larger concepts, what will you do with them? What can you do with them? Not just answer what the teacher wants me to answer in the language that the teacher wants me to answer it, but put it into practice. What we tell students very consistently, and I'm sure you've heard me say it many times, is that for the most part, we are preparing our students for jobs that do not exist right now. We can no longer just ask them a question and have them spit back what we said to them. They have to be able to do things with the information that they're learning in these, these, these classrooms. So, why do I say this? When a parent looks at Parent Portal, what do they see? With formative, interim, and summative assessments, they see a skill thread and it makes sense to them. I've had many parents say to me, my, here, I looked on Parent Portal, my child is doing great on the formative assessments, like hundreds, nineties, um, you know, really good grades on them. Interm's is getting a little bit less and summative's even, even less. Well, what does that mean? That means your child is not making those connections and we need to help your child make those connections between those discrete skills to the content, to the application, to the real-world application. Parents have very good information about that when it's done well and we intend to do it well. Power School obviously is a powerful instrument of this because that's really what opens up that grade book to the world, without having to make a meeting, catch somebody on the phone, or feel like you're bothering someone, and, and I'm speaking from a parent's point of view when I say that. So, our job is to make that work. It's, it's been, we've had our challenges, like any implementation of new software, we've had our glitches, we are working very hard at making sure that they are fixed and that we have the proper checks and balances in place so that they do not continue, because frankly, I'm tired of losing sleep over them and I'm sure parents are too. However, it's still a powerful tool for information for parents and it changes the way we do business for the better. As we move forward, we've been talking with a lot of different, different people, different schools, different colleges, about what do we do moving forward? How do we make sure? We're going to have to make very specific choices about the courses that we offer as we get smaller. You cannot be, you can't be everything to everyone. So, we need to make very specific choices about how we prepare these kids for the jobs that I just said don't exist yet. How do we teach them to be good thinkers, good problem solvers, excellent collaborators? So, as we move forward, we're looking at different ways that we could attract students to this school and make their programs more relevant. The areas of concentration that we've talked about, humanities and the arts is a very clear link to what we hold dear in this community and concentrations in those areas could be powerful learning experiences for our students. STEM Academy would be another awesome way. Those students who are very, very interested in the sciences, wanna prepare for engineering, problem-solving type careers would do very well in a STEM program. And we're already on, under, we have parts of that underway with Project Lead the Way and some of the new technology classes as we bring in the academy more fully, that will teach our students in this realm. And then we've also talked about international studies and languages, something that is very, um, it's, it's on the rise in many schools, many of the really good, challenging schools, because our students need to be even more of global citizens if they are to be well-prepared to go out into the world. So, we're looking at those, we're researching them with some, with some colleges, asking what the expectations are, what we can expect, to create programs that will make their education more relevant and attract more students to our school. College and career readiness is also a huge part of this. You just got it, the board was just treated to a tour of part of that in our, our TV studio and I, when you think about it, TV studio, there are amazing technical skills that students are learning, but they're also learning to, those authentic experiences. When they are writing for a T, a TV show or for any kind of a workshop, anything that they're doing live, they have to be really specific with their language so that people will understand them. That is not an easy skill. It's an important, authentic performance of writing that I think is very, very valuable. We need to look at bringing more UConn credits through the early college experience, I'm sorry for the acronym, that's the only one I missed. ECE stands for Early College Experience. And college credits through dual enrollment. UConn credits in many ways, you won't find them in Newsweek and I know some of us really value that, but UConn credits, I believe, in many ways are more valuable than AP credits because you leave high school with a college transcript. Not a, you can pay money and take a test and maybe you'll pass it. You have, that curriculum is approved by the college and you leave with a transcript as you should. So, we need to look at more opportunities for that. Certification programs. When our students leave, say, an auto class, what would be wrong with making sure that they have a certification that says to future employers, I can change oil, I can use the lift, I can, I don't know, whatever it is that you do with cars, that stuff, okay? But if they had that, that certificate and that's really what they wanted to do with their lives, they could bring it somewhere and say, this is me, I have this recognized certification. And I, there's other examples of that, it just auto came into my head, perhaps because I know nothing about it. So, that was my intellectual curiosity, hoping it had come to me through this talk. Co-op courses with Nogita Valley Community Colleges or other community colleges, we need to start relationships as we get smaller. You're not always going to find a teacher who wants to teach one art class, because that's what we'll have by our size. We need to look now, and we're doing that, to create partnerships with community colleges that will actually send someone to us to teach the class and then those students who are looking to be more career than college-ready will have a, a relationship with the next step of their education. It may not be a four-year college, but it will be an important experience for those students before they go off to Colorado as an, an auto school that's very, very, that's known very much in the auto world. Those students will have someone who is very well aware of that and they will have a relationship with, say, a Nogita Valley Community College, which will make further education feel more accessible to them. These are going to be important things as we move forward and it's gonna be harder to get them done in a smaller school. So, we have a plan, so that that will happen. It won't be, oh my goodness, we're small and we can't find a teacher. We will already have looked forward to the future and said, okay, this is how we'll make it happen. And I'm, I'm very excited, as you can probably tell, I think we've had, when I started to do this presentation, I was really amazed as I kept going at how much has happened and I'm not even coming close to talking about everything that has happened. It's a testament to our teachers and their flexibility, it's a testament to our students who have embraced the change with very little, very little problems, with very little complaints and they've not only embraced it, they've made it their own and they're making it work for themselves. So, everything that you see on these pages is a testament to this learning community and how it has embraced change and created the ability to move forward and to do what's best for our kids. Is that under five? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any question? Billy?
How, how are the middle and high, and middle and high school kids integrating? How, how are you finding that in this first really year?
Frankly, I find it seamless. We did, we made a lot of efforts to make sure that our middle school classrooms were separate from our high school classrooms. As a matter of fact, the shared teachers, we made sure that those were classrooms that are accessible from this library as well as from the middle school hallway, so that never the twang shall meet. Within about two weeks, our middle school students were taking the shortest route, not at all intimidated by the high school students. I'm not saying that they never feel that way. I, and I'm going to use another example that really, really warmed my heart, is when we filmed our little happy dance just before April vacation to, that will become probably the intro to our NEASC visiting committee video. High school students came to me and said, we realize that, you know, if, we have to make this happen, we have to make the, the little kids feel more comfortable. And as we danced around the mall just before April vacation, what I saw were high school kids making sure that their middle school counterparts felt comfortable and that they were having fun. It really was very nice. Jay Stewart looked at me and said, in my perfect world, this would happen every day. I'm not sure she's wrong. I know it wouldn't feel very rigorous, I get it, but I, I'm not sure she's wrong.
Great.
Michelle?
Kim, thank you. That is the single best presentation that I've seen since I've been on the board.
Thank you.
I love your enthusiasm, your willingness to embrace new ideas, your energy and move forward, all the avenues you're looking down to improve education and making our problems into real, real benefits.
Thank you.
Because we have a small size, but we have a great staff, we have great intellect... Because we have a small size, but we have a great staff, we have great intellectual zest up here, and if we can just harness it, we can make a really unique education for these kids. So, we, I see this, all these new ideas as being tremendously important, and we should plow forward and guaranteeing its continual thriving.
Absolutely. I appreciate that. And keep in mind that it's very easy to be enthusiastic about such a wonderful experience, both for myself as an educator and for kids.
I think it's great, too, Kim. I feel that, the only thing I would add to is that we don't necessarily have to be resigned to calling ourselves small forever, because it could happen, but so much of this could increase our population.
Beautiful thing.
When we have all of this under our belt, and when people choose where to live, we, you know, prognosis is a prognosis, and they always are. They talk about, you know, fate or guiding your own life. And you can say, "Well, somebody said that this is going to happen, so that's going to happen, that's the way it goes." Well, sure, on the trajectory we're on now, we're going to end up with this tiny population that we're beginning to be even better prepared for. But we can also try to move the needle a little bit and, and make sure that that prognosis doesn't actually happen, or try to keep it from happening. And this is doing both. That's why I would say, not only for the prognosis as it is, this is great, but this is also great towards taking steps towards moving the needle and making that current prognosis work.
That's a good point, and let me be, let me be very clear. I would be happy to implement this plan when droves of kids come here. That would be awesome. I see, I see my piece in this puzzle as making this the best school it can be, not trying to tell towns how to attract kids to their town, not trying to get involved in the politics of this region. My focus needs to be on teaching and learning, making Chapag the best it can be, and let you folks iron on all the others.
We all have our part of the weight to bear, so this is really great.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Kim, I was going to say, I had the pleasure of being in the school two days a week for the better part of the last several months, my role in coaching the debate team here. And I can tell you that what I saw was a seamless transition in that you have kids from every age in the school, from sixth grade up through 12, walking in and out of this area. It doesn't seem like it's a small school when they're changing classes.
Yeah, no, no.
Let me tell you that. But I will tell you that you would see all of them interacting, all of them getting to where they needed to be, settling down in programs here in the library and in the classrooms, and you could see the engagement through the few doors that were open. You had that opportunity as passing by to see that kind of engagement in the classes. And I really think that it was a tremendously inspiring thing, so I, I've witnessed what you're talking about. It's absolutely true. I saw no evidence that there was anything other than kids feeling comfortable mingling and passing through the building, because frankly, the middle school students and the senior high school students don't really, they don't hang out. I mean, they've got their own groups.
That's a beautiful thing as well.
It's a beautiful thing. They've got their own groups, but they sure do negotiate each other in a seamless way.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Anything else? My thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
I'm wondering, I'd like to have item 5.1 next. We have some students here who are part of the presentation, so we can get them, so they can go home. If we can do 5.1, Virtual High School and Chromebook Update, I think that leads into, from where we just were at the high school. Joan?
Good evening. I'm Joan Temple. I'm the School Library Media Specialist, and this is my space. And I'm here to talk tonight just briefly about Virtual High School, one of the new initiatives this year. We just completed our first year of Virtual High School. As you may or may not know, Virtual High School is a nonprofit collaborative that involves 700 schools from around the world. And the mission statement is clear and concise, it's to expand students' educational opportunities and 21st century skills. So, we had 20 seats in the fall and 20 seats in the spring. We had 12 students take full-year advanced placement courses. They were AP Statistics, two students in that, nine students in AP Computer Science, and one student in AP Government and Politics. And then we had, in addition to that, the single semester classes. And we had, in the fall, Forensics, two students, German Language and Culture, one student, Video Game Design, two, and Engineering for Sustainable Energy, one. That was the fall. And in the spring, this is my favorite, Peacekeeping, one student in that, Criminology, one student in that, Music Listening and Critique, one student, Italian Language and Culture, Animal Behavior and Zoology, and then we had one student in Honors Chemistry. We had eight students score above an 88 for the year, or for the semester. We had two students fail. One was a full-year student, and one was in the spring. We did learn through this experience that Virtual High School is not for every student. It's mandatory that you be self-directed and able to work with not a lot of supervision. Communication is vital also. I am one of the two site coordinators. But the only, the computer class actually had a space that students went to and worked for that entire VHS period. And one of the site coordinators, Sheila Gambino, with them. The rest of the students were pretty much, they had a VHS period, but they were working in the library or independently. So, it really requires that you be able to do that effectively on your own. We learned that the courses are very, very vigorous and rigorous. There are a lot of work. A lot of people might see the name Peacekeeping for a class and think, "Hmm, how hard can that be?" Very hard. It's very hard. All of our students were quite challenged. We are currently working on enrolling students for next year, and we have one student so far in World Conflict, the UN Introduction, and she's also enrolled in Modern Middle East for the spring. That just gives you an idea of the wide variety of courses that are offered. It's a great program for students to be able to learn something that they're passionate about, that we might not be able to offer in our small schooling department. I have two stellar students with me who agreed to answer any questions that you might have, and just to give their, their idea of what the virtual high school experience was like. Caroline Herman, who was in AP Computer Science.
Hi, I took AP Computer Science. I'm one of nine students, so obviously the most popular virtual high school class. And I actually had a large role in getting everybody to sign up, which is part of the reason why I wanted to talk to you all about it. Last year, there was a video that a lot of our science teachers showed us about how important programming was and how cool it was, and it got me even more excited. I've been bugging Mr. Dyer to get a Computer Science class since probably my sophomore year. So, I got about, like, upwards of 10 other students to go to guidance with me and say that we would absolutely sign up for an AP Computer Science class if it were offered. And out of them, nine of us actually were willing to enroll in the virtual high school class. So, obviously, there is a demand for that type of class, and we were all interested in the virtual high school experience. And a lot of people had a really hard time with it. Many of them, if you just asked them about virtual high school, they'd go, "Oh, I didn't like it." But I wanted to give some insight as to why it might have been hard for some of those First of all, it wasn't greatly organized. My one example for that was this project for Vowels R Us, it's called Vowels R Us, and we had to, it was very difficult, it was worth 100 points, and the one person who finished it perfectly spent hours and hours and hours on it, he did an amazing job. And everybody else sort of got it about halfway done and submitted anyways. And then there was another 100-point project that took me one class period to complete. So, the variance in the projects was a bit confusing. I never knew if 100-point project coming up was going to take me 20 hours or two hours. And the other problem was, it was a bit outdated, which was actually very strange. There's, it's an AP class, so it's nationally standardized, and there's this standardized component of it called the Gridworld Case Study, which is basically, it changes every five years or so. And currently, it's like a little computer game that pops up, and there's little bugs, and you can move them around. And that was actually a really interesting part of the course, because it's standardized by College Board. All AP Computer Science students across the nation download the Gridworld Case Study, and they can go through the manual and try out all the different projects. And one of the fun projects that we did with that, it comes with different types of bugs, and you have to program your own bugs and get them to do things. For example, it comes with a box bug, that'll take a few steps, and it'll turn, and it'll make a little box. And you can make them go in circles, and make them go in spirals, which was a lot of fun. But if you went to the Gridworld Case Study lessons on virtual high school, it was all about marine biology, which was kind of confusing, because the Gridworld Case Study is all about bugs. But if you look up marine biology case study, that was a case study like eight years ago when the virtual high school course wrote that part of it. So, that was a bit weird. The individual instructor, the instructors messaged us about that and had us download the right stuff. One other thing was, there's something called a String Tokenizer that we learned to use very early on, and we used throughout all of our subsequent projects. It breaks up data files, so for example, if you had a text file that said Caroline Herman's 2014, you could get it to break it up into three individual words rather than one long word. And we use that in a whole lot of projects. But if you search String Tokenizer, it talks about all the other alternatives to String Tokenizers and how nobody uses String Tokenizers anymore. So, it was a bit strange to be using old parts of the Java Computer Science language in a current project that we're doing for an online course. But to touch more on the positives, because I know that's a lot of negatives about it, I did learn Java, which is really cool. I never thought I was going to be able to learn Java in high school unless I went out and did it on my own. And if you ask most of the students in my class, they probably would say that they wouldn't take it again, but I definitely would take it again. It was very rigorous, and not everyone could deal with the rigor. It wasn't the rigor that I had a problem with, it was the organization of the class, but I did learn Java through it. I'm pretty confident that I got a four or a five, which are the two highest scores on the AP exam. So, that is a huge positive. It really did prepare me, and I'm pretty confident that I know the whole Computer Science, language of Java now. And I'm going off to, like, one of the top Computer Science schools in the country next year. So, if I hadn't taken that class, I don't know where I would be next year. So, it was a very good opportunity to learn a programming language, and I am definitely glad that I took it. I just wanted to sort of share my whole experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. Any questions?
Yeah? I just wanted to ask for the whole, for the just virtual high school experience, did you find it helpful to be taking the same class that multiple students were taking? And did you guys often sit on the computer at the same ti, like, did you come together to work on the simultaneously?
Yeah, there was, fourth period, we have, on my schedule, it says VHS AP Computer Science A, and we all go into that room, and there's a whole lot of computers, and we install all the Java stuff on them, and we all sit around together during fourth period and program. The fun part came when you finish the project super early, and everyone just wants you to send you their code because they don't have time to work on it. That type of thing happens, because, I mean, Computer Science class, we actually had a unit on cheating in Computer Science, where we just wrote about how we wouldn't cheat computers. I never did that type of thing, but.
And not all, all of, correct me if I'm wrong, but they, and there's, there's different instructors. They, even though they were sitting in the same classroom and all taking the same course, some, the instructors were different.
Yeah, if you log on to everyone's classes, the lessons are all the same, and the instructors are all different. Like, you teach the same lessons that everyone signs up for. So, that's part of why some of the stuff was outdated, just because, like, everybody's was outdated, because it's the course on virtual high school, it's not the instructors that are designing the course.
And the way that they make changes to virtual high school courses, according to our own virtual high school teacher, who is on our staff, who teaches German on the virtual high school, all of those instructors out there have to agree on the changes and work together to better the courses. So, they'll be taking all of this, they'll be taking all this input and hopefully updating some of the courses that need them.
Yeah, they do give you course surveys. I talked about Vowels R Us, because I did not like that project.
It's, it's going to take a little bit of time for those instructors to work together.
Go.
So, when you're doing a project and you're stuck, do you, like, email the instructor?
Yeah.
Or how involved, how does this get involved?
There is a discussions forum, and a lot of the time, one of our assignments for the week would be posting the discussions forum about this and this and this, and you get 20 points for it or something. There is a part of the discussions forum that says "private topic," and then it has your name, and if you post in that, only your instructor can see it. And it's things like, "I need an extension on this project," or, "Here, I'm uploading my code, can you take a look at it, please? I don't know why it's not working." And you can also post in the general help area where all the other students can see it. So, there are, like, help networks out there.
Do you think this course is really key to your college acceptance?
I really think it is. I have worked so hard to get Computer Science, and I finally got it, and I'm so glad that I, like, know some Computer Science now. It's been, I'm really glad, because now I'm confident in that. I wouldn't want to go off to college potentially majoring in computer engineering or something, not having taken a Computer Science class. So, I'm really glad that I got the opportunity to take a Computer Science class.
Well, congratulations, and let me know when you start your own business. I'd like to invest.
Thank you. Who knows?
We also have Emily Taylor.
I'm sorry, Kelly, did you have a question?
Quick question. You do have instructors, remote instructors. Do you have any mentors here on campus that you can go to when you're really stuck in that career field and ask a helping question?
Mrs. Gambino will help you out if you're having trouble in the class, but nobody at Chapag knows Java, I don't think. Mr. Teaser also knows some programming, but none of them know the language that we're working in, so it's sort of up to us and the internet and our textbooks.
I do have to say, my co-site coordinator, Sheila Gambino, did spend a lot of time with them.
Yeah, she tried to learn it, she learned it with us.
She learned it with them, right.
Yeah. And I do want to say that I did too well in the class. I mean, I know a lot of people in our class failed, but I maintained an A all year, along with my friend who was next to me, so.
You're done.
And the four, I know you haven't gotten your grade yet, but the four or five on the AP exam gets your college credit?
It will. I'm going to Carnegie Mellon University next year, and they'll take a four or a five for Intro to Computer Science.
Good luck.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Well done.
You have another student, right?
Yes, Emily.
Hi, I'm Emily Taylor. I took two VHS courses, one in the spring and one in the fall. I took Engineering for Sustainable Energy and then Music Listening and Critique. And the reason why I was drawn to the VHS program was I was having scheduling issues where, because I was, I'm in the academy program, so I have set classes that I have to have certain, certain periods. And then I'm also taking French, and that's only offered during one period. And I really wanted to take a music class, that's why I wanted to do a VHS class, because I wanted to get into the music society. I don't know if they'll accept the music class that I took, but I'm really hoping they will. But yeah, so I took VHS because I was having scheduling problems. And for, overall, it was a really positive experience for me, because I'm a really independent learner. I don't really have problems with figuring stuff out by myself and using online resources and just, like, solving problems when they're, when they come at me. And I also got to work at my own pace, which is really nice. So, like, if I really understood something, I could just do it all at once, and then I wouldn't have to be pulled behind by other kids, which was really nice. Or if I didn't understand something, I could work a little bit more on that. And the only problem I'd have to say is, like Caroline, there were discussions for, each week, we had to have, everyone had to be posted discussions, and we'd, like, everyone would, like, read something or, like, listen to something, and we would post our thoughts or respond to some questions. And it was kind of frustrating, because not all of the kids would, like, post on time, or they'd, like, wait till the very last minute to upload, and part of the assignment was, "Oh, you have to post your response and then respond to three other classmates." So, some weeks, I was waiting till, like, the very last night to finish my work, because that's when everyone started to post their discussion forms. That, yeah, that was the only problem I really ran into. The good part of VHS, again, was being able to work at my own pace, and since I'm an independent learner, it's really nice. And I also got to become more familiar with VHS and the whole way they set up their classes. So, if I decide to take another VHS class, say, maybe an AP class, I'll have more experience, so it won't be as difficult for me. Also, the teacher's really nice. I went on the Quebec trip, and my teacher was totally understanding that I couldn't access Wi-Fi for, like, a long period of time, and she gave me extensions, and it was very nice. And I was also... And I was also in B thirteen with the AP Computer Science kids. And this Gambino was super nice about helping me be introduced to the VHS system and like if I had any problems or if I didn't know how to find it, she helped me out. It's really nice.
Emily, uh, thank you. Are you, can you tell me are you a junior or senior?
I'm a sophomore.
A sophomore? Do you hear other students talking about VHS, the possibility? I mean, what is the tenor that you hear in the school of students' thoughts about it? Can you say?
Well, since it's so new, people have a lot of mixed reviews on it, like.
When you say people, you mean students?
Students. But some of them like, it was really hard because if you fell behind in VHS, it takes a lot to get back up. And so if you like missed a couple of assignments, uh, the students who like might have fallen behind a little bit, they would say that they didn't really like it because they couldn't get a good grade because they weren't used to the fast-paced, um, course, courses that are offered. But, um, other students like me were like, wow, this is really nice. Because, you know, if you keep up with the work, it's not too much of a difficult class, the classes that I was taking, so it was nice.
But your sense is that this is a format that students will consider, they're gonna, as time goes on, they'll be considering it more?
Especially, um, since Chapag doesn't offer all these classes that VHS offers. I think that a lot more students would be looking into VHS.
Okay, thank you.
I have two questions. So, can you access, access this program at home? How do you do your homework?
Oh, I can access it anywhere where I have wifi or even I can access it on my phone. I've done that before. It's really nice, you just go onto the VHS collaborative website and then you log in and then you can access your courses and like, it, it was really nice that I could go.
So if you have nothing better to do on a Friday night, you can just. And, uh, did you miss interaction because of the subject matter that you were doing? I mean, did you want to talk to someone about this in a discussion? Or were you satisfied that you could do all this online?
Well, I mean, I kind of, I did get to interact with people online. I got to write down my thoughts and my feelings and that was really nice because I really got to like think about, um, what I really felt about the topic. And then I would see that other people like agreed with me or disagreed with me and had different ideas. So it was a lot like normal classrooms, just no word, no verbal words, written words. I mean, sometimes it was like, yeah, I'd like, I'd just like talk to my friends and I'd just spiel out my whole entire course but then they'd have no idea what I was talking about. But, yeah, I mean, it was here and there.
Did you develop relationships with the other students on, I mean, that were on the same course?
I think I, I, I developed, um, yeah, I developed some relationships because one of my, uh, my first course, my engineering course, um, we were put into groups, uh, for a group project. And, um, most, there was like, some of, some people, I don't know what happened, they just like didn't participate. There was like a couple of kids who just fell off the face of the earth, I don't know. But the ones that were working, I feel like, yeah, I got to know them more and like I got to see their style of learning and like that helped me, um, improve my style of learning by incorporating their ideas and their strategies and it was nice.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
What was your, uh, what was your biggest takeaway from your music course? What did you, what do you think like you really, what was the value of it to you?
I think it was, well, we, we got to listen to a lot of different music. And even stuff that I didn't even think was considered music, I would have never been exposed to before. There were some like really weird sounds and even the Buddhist monks who sang really low and really loud and I'd never heard that before. That was eye-opening, that a human could even make that noise. I think just hearing like, uh, being exposed to all the different types of music and like we, um, we went through the history of stuff and how music evolved from like more classical to more jazz and then it went to like blues and rock and now popular and normal music, well, yeah. It was normal to me. But it was, it was really interesting to like see all the strands of where everything came from. And, I don't know, I just got to hear a lot more than I ever like would have listened to on my own. Like I found out that I do like a lot more jazz than I thought. I mean, like I already do, yeah, I like, I like classical, that's nice. I, of course I love rock, but I mean, I didn't know I liked jazz music until that course.
Good. Any more? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Very informative.
Congratulations. Excellent.
Caroline, did you have something else or you don't?
No.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before Caroline, I just wanted to tell you that when I first heard that we had a group of students that were going to be taking AP Computer Science on Virtual High School, my heart was in my throat as someone who has, you know, I have a background in, in programming, albeit not, not the language that you're to learn.
Teachers know not.
Exactly. I am so impressed with you because that is probably the most difficult Virtual High School course to take. So for you to have gotten through it and to have scored that well, nice job. I'm very impressed, very impressed.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Kelly, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a comment. I think that the, the fact that these students persist through ambiguity. They work on their own, they're very independent and, you know, I, I'm familiar with a number of other course providers in the virtual world and they have the exact same problem. The links are out of date. They'll tell them to explore careers and physics or whatever and all the links are old and dead. And, um, some of the, some of the links are wrong. And I think that the colleges are very aware that these students have these experiences and they have to persevere anyway. And from my experience, they look upon these courses extremely positively. And they really understand that it takes a little bit extra to do this on your own, to push through these problems. And because they're common to all these platforms. And as, as you heard this lovely lady say, it can bring in parts of the world to our little hill here that aren't possible in any other way. Uh, I think it's a fabulous opportunity for them.
I think the other, oh, I'm sorry.
Michael? Just a quick question. Are all students, including students that are just the only one in their class, for example, from Chapag, are they scheduled a period that they're taking that course?
Well, yes, this year. Next year, we've actually built into the schedule because one of the things that we found out was that we had students that wanted to take Virtual High School courses that doesn't fit within the course of the day. And we don't want to deny those students the opportunity, especially if they're self-motivated. So what we've done is we've created a nine-period schedule. It's a seven-period during the day, but it allows us to schedule Virtual High School classes and independent studies. Because we do have a few students who are also taking independent study classes that of topics that don't fit within their schedule, but they're highly motivated students and they want to be able to do this and, and that's how we're accomplishing it for next year. And just to sort of back up before I get into the Chromebooks, the Virtual High School piece is, the first year of Virtual High School is sometimes difficult because students don't know what to expect. And it is extremely rigorous. It is a tough course to take. It does open up the world to lots of topics that you might not have exposure to. But the other benefit, aside from what you're hearing from the kids, is that our students today are going to have an opportunity to go out and take online classes when they leave high school. There are some colleges that are entirely online. And I think one of the things that you learn about yourself when you take these courses is, am I the right type of person to take online classes? It requires you to be extremely self-motivated and self-organized. And Caroline and the AP Computer Science students are a perfect example of the fact that you will not always have access in live time to someone who knows the material. So, Virtual High School can open doors, but I think one of the things that you have to learn in the process is which students are the best suited for it. So you'll find out, there, there will become a time over the next few years where kids will say, you know, this is the right kind of kid, this is the one that you, you should try this. And frankly, some kids try it and they just don't like it. It's not, they want to be in a class where they're actually feeding off of each other's energy. I also had students in the past that took Virtual High School that loved it. They thrive in the environment of being with people from all over the world. And I also had students that couldn't handle it. It was too much independence, they needed somebody sitting with them and they were also the kind of kid that needed that energy that you get when you're in a room with people. So we're all different, our students are all different. We have to provide them these opportunities for different kinds of kids to learn differently, so.
Could you give them, when they're freshmen, a week in science, a week in history, where they do their work, their assignments, uh, virtually, so they have a taste of it? And they can kind of test themselves out and see how they match up with this, so they don't go into it all of a sudden?
Well, that actually leaves really nice things to my Chromebook discussion. Because one of the things that the Chrome, uh, uh, let me, let me go back to saying that with, with Ms. Gallows' presentation, one of the things that I was so excited about as I heard her talk is how many of these things that she's talked about that the Chromebook's actually impacted. And I'll just tell you, for example, the Common Core. All of our students in grades six through eleven have one-to-one Chromebooks or were offered one-to-one Chromebooks. There were some students, a very small number, that opted not to take the Chromebooks because they have their own laptops. So rather than bring a laptop and a Chromebook, they chose to keep their own. Very small number, but we gave them that opportunity. Our fifth graders came online with Chromebooks in the classroom. They are not one-to-one, they don't take them home. Developmentally, they're really not ready to be assuming that kind of responsibility. So they're using them in the classrooms on a day-to-day basis, they have access to them right in the classroom. Um, and I had the opportunity to go down last week and watch one of the fifth-grade classes, which was incredibly exciting. But when we talk about the Common Core State Standards, there is so much in the Common Core State Standards that are impacted by the Chromebooks. The ability to collaborate, the ability to work across buildings, the ability to analyze data in real time. I was in a fifth-grade class last week, fifth grade, where they were working, all of them on their Chromebooks. And on the smartboard, they had a graph of data that the class had collected. And they were having a really in-depth conversation about how when you change the fields and display the data in a different way, how it communicates a different message. And for fifth graders to have that ability to sit in front of them and make their own modifications and then communicate to the teacher how they did it and then see it on the smartboard, the discussion with the kids was fascinating. And then I walked into a social studies classroom where they were learning about World War II. And they were watching a video on a very short snippet of Pearl Harbor. And then collaboratively working on a Google document where they were collecting facts. It was, it was so cute to watch the fifth graders try to, try to do the collaborative document and not write on very step, over each other's things. Developmentally, that's a really neat thing to watch them do. But it was prefacing them for when they were going to work with their peers in the other schools. So they were going to actually be doing a project across the three elementary schools using the Chromebooks and Google Docs as a way for them to put together their ideas and their presentations. The Chromebooks make that so easy. It used to be, just last year, that for a teacher to be able to incorporate research or to build even something as simple as a presentation, they had to sign out a lab. And they had to truck the kids across the building, they had to go into the space and then they had to make sure that there was time because that lab, I can tell you, that lab filled up. It was full every single day. They don't do that anymore. It's real time, it's in the classroom, they do it when they need it. You'll go into any classroom, any time of the day, there will be some kids on the Chromebooks working on a research project, working on a collaborative document. One might be conversing with their teacher because the teacher is using Google Docs and giving real-time feedback. They work with each other, uh, like I said, they're getting ready to do this across the buildings. That is, was not possible prior to the time that we had the Chromebooks. And then when we go down to things like SBAH and NWEA, those things happened in the classroom. These kids had their Chromebooks, they were totally comfortable with their Chromebooks. They came in, they took their assessment, the teachers could schedule them anytime. It wasn't a disruption to their day. It was amazingly fluid how when we walked through SBAH, because of course, SBAH, the first few days of SBAH was pretty stressful for those of us who were in charge of making sure the tech worked and the kids could sign in and that everybody knew what test they were taking. And I gotta tell you, after the first day of SBAH, the kids got it. They knew how to get in, they had their Chromebooks, they logged in, they did what they needed to do when they were finished with the test. They pulled out, they closed their Chromebook, they pulled out their reading materials. The kids became incredibly self-sufficient. So NWEA set the stage for SBAH. They already knew how to do an assessment online. So they had taken all of this in the fall. Even our little kids were, were able to have that exposure in fifth grade. So that was awesome. Obviously, C didn't have a whole lot to do with it. But with SRBI, our kids were able to, they were using Chromebooks in our guided study classes when they were first using Odysseyware. Now that the kids all have them, they, we, we pulled those out and are using them elsewhere now. But I think what it's really shown me is that if you walk through this building at any time of the day and pop into any classroom, you're going to see those Chromebooks used. And they are used daily. They may not be used the whole period, but they're used daily. If there's something that comes up in Humanities class where they need to pop on and do a research, you know, they'll point to a kid, it'll jump online, it'll, they'll start researching a topic that they needed a question answered for. So, I have to thank you because when I came to ask you for this last year, it was kind of out there. Uh, you know, saying, you know, I want to give them to all the kids and it was, it was an expense. But I have to tell you that I can't imagine this school without them now. And next year, in fact, if you talk to the teachers, many of them, I, I, we had talked briefly with sixth grade about keeping them in school next year and, and just having them as a, in-school device. Because one thing that we are finding is that our kids, there's a responsibility aspect to this. You know, you have to remember to bring your Chromebook in charged. You have to remember to make sure that you don't leave it in the gym. There's a lot grasping of our kids in terms of responsibility. Prior to any of them getting their Chromebooks, they attended an orientation session with me. And they learned about the Chromebook, they learned the responsibility of the Chromebook, the rules of the Chromebook, what they could and couldn't do with it. They learned they had to use the cases that we gave them because those cases are really designed to protect them. But I love being out in the mall and seeing as the kids are passing, they all have their shoulder-strapped Chromebooks running to the next class. I mean, they don't leave, they're, they're so a part of their lives now. And next year, um, all of our students at the school will have them. And we're also planning to extend them down into third and fourth grade. So I think that we are, um, I was able to do a full-day PD with our fifth-grade team before we distributed them out to the students. And, um, they are really piloting and making sure that we have all of our procedures and training in place for, training our fourth and our third-grade teachers next year. I recently had a meeting, our last meeting of the year with the Tech Champions. And part of what I do with the Tech Champions is they're my little R and D group and they give me feedback. And, um, adding the last two days of the school year on for professional development is huge for us because that last day is an all-tech PD day for our six, twelve teachers. And they want to know more, they want, they are so excited and they're enthusiastic. There's so much going on here that is so different than even a year ago. It's really exciting and if you get the chance, come in, take a look at what they're doing with them, it's, it's really fascinating. Now, has it gone off without a hitch? No. It, it was a lot for us on the tech side to manage. We originally had only planned on doing three grades and sort of seeing how it went. And then we decided to just go full bore in and do six through eleven. So it took us a little while to roll everybody out. We're dealing, we did offer the insurance to all of our parents and the majority of our parents bought the insurance, which is awesome. The kids have broken some of the screens, but with the insurance, it's instant. Literally within five days, they come back and they have a, we have a brand-new fixed Chromebook, so the insurance is big. But for the most part, I think what we're really finding is the kids are way more responsible than I think we give them credit for. They are handling these, these, we have hundreds of them in the building. And they're doing a really awesome job of making sure that they're coming in prepared and ready to use them, so. One of the other things that we're doing next year is we're changing our sixth-grade computer class. It's kind of outdated at this point and we're really focusing now on digital citizenship. Because what we're finding is now that they have access to technology all the time, it's important that they really understand the digital citizenship component. And, um, so we're, we're exciting, we're excited about that as well.
What about the bring-your-own-device policy that we had? Because you're using Chromebooks as such a basis for so much. I mean, yet we have kids bringing just about anything. Now, obviously, we're sitting around the table using what we feel is comfortable right now. Or we didn't charge up our Chromebooks. But do we still need to see kids with a lot of devices?
You know what, I think that the devices are different, they're used for different purposes and I don't, you know, you, that bridge is so crossed. Kids today are used to having multiple devices and the kids that have them, it really, I can't, I'll, I'll give you a quick example. When we started SBAH testing. When we started SBAH testing, I made the decision to turn off the BYOD because I wanted to make sure that we had full broadband access for the SBAH testing. And because we had everyone testing, the wireless was going to be hit pretty hard. And I got to tell you, that turning off the BYOD did have a big impact on the kids. It was like, all of a sudden, they, they, you know, they, there are classrooms that use pole everywhere with cellphones. They use, they take pictures as part of projects. And then they, you know, they immediately send those off to be put in presentations. And I can't tell you how many emails I got. You know, when's the BYOD coming back on? When is it coming back on? We can't function without the BYOD. And it, it's legitimate. We, we monitor the traffic and we see what kids are doing on it. And other than the side, you know, the fact that a lot of kids do like to listen to music, which I don't blame them. I mean, that, the learning, there are some learning styles that do better when they're listening to music while they work. So when they're sitting in, in, in a space where they have the ability to listen to music, they do. And I really don't think that's a problem if it's not impacting their studies. But I also think our teachers have gotten a lot better in terms of being able to say when, when they can use things and when they can't. But I think that the majority of the teachers would probably tell you that turning off the BYOD is not a good thing, that they really want to have that. In fact, most of the teachers asked me to turn it back on. So we did turn it back on after we made sure that the SBAH was going to run okay. Yes?
I guess the component that I struggle with a little bit is that I think that, and it's something that I struggled with last year when it was the BYOD, not B, but D. But is that during, I know it was teaching responsibility about how to use the device.
Right.
But I also do feel it's important that we create boundaries so that we are teaching them how to use the device and still giving them the opportunities. And the place I struggle with it is during the cafeteria time, when they're at the lunchroom. And they're looking down and they're not doing this. And I feel strongly that as a school, there are certain times that I think that we should create boundaries so that we create more communication among the students, more face-to-face and less of this. And I, I'm, I'm really struggling with this piece because I have to tell you, I do think that it would benefit the students if we did create certain times of the day. And I think a meal is a reasonable opportunity to say, they're not allowed in the cafeteria. They should be in their lockers down.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree with you. And I think it's the times we live in. I think if you go into a restaurant, you'll struggle with the same thing because there are some people who are, I was just at a restaurant on Sunday and I was so, I was so surprised. There was a whole family sitting out. It was Mother's Day and they were there for Mother's Day. And all of them had their cellphone down. And I was, I was so surprised. It wasn't just the children. It was the adults who are doing the same thing. But I do think that we, part of that digital citizenship class that we're talking about, that's where we're discovering the need for that. And that we really have to focus, I've also been working with the elementary teachers the same way. We're talking about how we really need to have this stretching from kindergarten all the way up in learning how to navigate the techno, the digital world. Because it is around them all the time. And, and the other thing that's very difficult is that different families have different rules about it.
Well, I, I agree with that. And then I just, I feel like that is part of being a community within our own school is really encouraging that community being face-to-face conversation. I mean, I, I think that, I think that that's important.
I do that while the cafeteria is open.
I, I don't, I'll somehow miss those pictures. But yeah, at the same time, I do think it's something.
There's a balance, there's a balance. And I think we have to continue to work on that because, yes.
You haven't, you haven't realized any of the fears that, that, that may have been expressed back at the beginning of this policy, that we would have abusive practices occur, kids would be downloading inappropriate things?
Well, I stay in touch with Matt Paracci, who is our, is our, and I ask him pretty much on our, I mean, they're going to have, we have, there's got to be some. There's been very few that have had, like, we, there's not a lot. And really, there are frankly, there are issues that we would have had anyways without the BYOD. I think that in general, you also, the kids at Chappaq, I've got to tell you, the kids at Chappaq are great kids. We really don't have really bad problematic kids here. They're mostly very respectful. And I, you know, I can tell them, put it away, and they will put it away. So I think that we have to continue to foster and teach them this. But I don't think that we're not having like a rampage of problems.
So what you started at was a very high level of responsible use and appreciation of the value of having that use.
And I tell the kids that. When we do the orientation session, I tell them that. I tell them that I, I trust you until you give me a reason not to trust you. And for the most part, they are very good. But given, if we have an individual student who is having individual issues, we can restrict them down to pretty much nothing. And we can take them off the BYOD. So we have the means to do that. But this is the time. Frankly, this is the time you want the kids to screw up. Because you want to have the time to teach them that before they go out into the real world. So this is our, this is our playground in terms of learning and teaching them what's appropriate and what's not appropriate. And if we take everything, if we just block everything, they'll never learn that. And then what happens is they go out and they go off to college. And on the college campuses is where they start to have a lot of problems.
You see, you screwed up. Your kids are too responsible already.
Well, you're talking a lot about BYOD, which is separate from the Chromebooks.
Yes.
And how do you feel, because I'd imagine that most of the current six through 11 are, are on Chromebooks.
Almost, yeah, it's like 98%. There's like 10 kids that are using their own.
Right. So for that 98%, you have a whole different kind of way of tracking and of guiding and teaching responsibility and digital citizenship. And where do you find that, where do you find potholes along that route? And the reason I mention this is I was wondering if there's a way that you can communicate to parents a way that they can support your design or your design can support them. And one way, it's from personal experience, is that when your child has a device which on the home network can offer games and YouTube and who knows what, and a child isn't doing their homework right in front of you, they could be doing their homework or they could be doing anything else. And that's partly the case, I know, in, in Chappaq as well. There's certain access through the Chromebook, which is not necessarily inappropriate, but might not be to the work at hand.
Correct.
How are you teaching that in a responsible way? And then how can you help parents either monitor or track or help their children focus their time between the work that's to be done on this device and the fact that it can be used for exploration or play otherwise?
Yes. And one of the things we do try to, when, when I have this orientation session, for example, and part of what we do teach them with, with digital citizenship is it isn't always inappropriate to be playing a game on the computer. It's not. It's, it's a, there's a billion-dollar industry in it. And if it's, you know, I've had students who are very interested in video game design that are now in college, making the video games. So I think that there's, that's not the point. The point is that, what I try to tell the kids is that when you're going to do something online, there's three things that you really need to think about. One is it impacting your education. So if you're sitting in math class and you're watching YouTube cat videos, that pretty much is impacting your educational experience. So that's the first question to ask yourself. The second question to ask yourself is, is what I'm doing age-appropriate? So we have a lot of discussions, discussions with our sixth and seventh graders who are not old enough to have Facebook accounts, who will giggle and say they have Facebook accounts. Well, age appropriately, you're not following terms of agreement. So as a digital citizen, you're setting yourself up right off the bat as doing something wrong. The other thing that always comes up is the, the rated M games. Well, playing a game on the Chromebook is one thing. But if you're playing a rated M game on the Chromebook, you're not old enough to do that. So right, right there, you're off, you've, rule number two, you violated. And then the third one is really broad. Are you doing something that impacts someone else? Are you being mean? Are you being disrespectful? Are you saying something that you would never say to someone's face online? If you operate within those three rules, you pretty much can guarantee that you're going to be a good digital citizen. And with kids, you need to keep it simple. Those are the three things that I always ask them. So they'll inevitably, in the orientation sessions, they would ask me questions like, well, 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 what if? What if I did this? And I'll say, okay, let's go back to the three things. Does it do any of these three things? And if you, as a parent, can do the same sort of things with the kids, it's going to suck, because honestly, you can't keep up with the newest app, with the newest website, with the newest social media. You cannot keep up. So you have to teach them in broad sense what's right and what's wrong about being a digital citizenship. Because every day, they're going to be hit with something new. And when they go off to college, I can guarantee you, there's a whole lot of other things that you don't even know exist that are going on. And they will have free access to it.
But it's also a matter of teaching work habits.
Yes.
And it's, and that's a difficult thing to begin with.
Yep.
But teaching work habits that, excuse me, are strong enough to avoid the vast amount of distractions that the internet provides as well.
Yes.
And so you can have a sixth or seventh or an eighth grader who may not have five hours of homework, but takes five hours to do their homework because they are in this environment that they'll do their, their hour of homework. But they also have five hours of undisturbed computer time. And how do you, how do you deal with screen time as you do as a parent with, with a middle schooler or maybe even as a high schooler? In, in terms of not just talking about this digital citizenship, but in terms of teaching good work, or reinforcing the good work habits that, that you're trying to teach in the building here?
Right. And that's something that you have to, that is something that we struggle with every day. I think that every day, the kids get more and more distracted by what's out there. And without cutting them off from it, you have to teach them to work within it. So that is also something that outside of digital citizenship that we want to work with our teachers on. Because having that conversation with them is part of the curriculum, is important. So when you talk to the kids about what they're doing with the Chromebooks in the class, this is a great opportunity for them to learn how to. I had a student once who told me that when she was working on her Capstone, which is essentially a senior project class, she realized on her own that Facebook was really a problem for her because she would just, just sign on long enough to check something and get sucked in for like hours. So what she did on her own, because we talked about this a lot in class. And one of the things that she did on her own is she installed this little application that limited her to a certain number of minutes per day of Facebook. And she tried to get on Facebook after that. It would be a big screen that says, nope, you've had enough. And she self-directed herself to do that because this was something that was, we talked about every day. So I think that there's, we all struggle with distractions in different ways. There's plenty of adults who have the same problem. You know, how many people on Super Bowl, the, the Monday after Super Bowl, it's one of the least productive workdays of the year because people are so busy. Or Black Friday, you know, people shopping online, Amazon. It, we all face it. So I think it's just a matter of building into what we teach our kids every day. Hey, you guys have the luxury of having this Chromebook in front of you. Let's talk about ways that we can manage it. And building it into the classroom conversation. Now, understand, this is all new to the teachers too. So the teachers are learning this process as we go. And sometimes I also think the best thing to do is ask the kids. Ask them how to solve the problem. They come up with some pretty good answers.
Sounds like this is sort of a, not a lot different from the kind of things you would have taught in years past. And when you talk about digital citizenship, someone else might say morality.
Yes.
Well, morality in the sense of, of recognizing that you have choices out there to make. You need to make appropriate choices. Otherwise, you could suffer from not making the right choices. So call it, it's the same basic, you know, what you're trying to, in, you're trying to bring out different concepts. You're trying to get kids to understand the principles because you can't cover every question that comes up.
And I think today, we call that habits of mind. It's perseverance. It's how to, how to, you know, manage your time. It's how to manage distractions. So those are things that even from the youngest age, we really just need to focus on teaching kids. We have to give them strategies. If we don't give them strategies, they're not getting that from YouTube.
And I understand that. But, but, and the reason I use the word morality is I was thinking in terms of moral philosophy where you have actually precepts and principles that guide you because you can never cover every, you can never teach every particular thing. But you can teach principles so that a person can be guided and think, why am I making this choice? So it sounds like you've just on a different platform, delivering a lot of the same things that we've been doing for years. And I guess that's going to be a surprise.
I had one overriding concern about bring-your-own-device, and that was the issue of equity. So I'm so happy that we have provided the devices the kids need if they need them. And that's a great, great leap forward. Do you see, considering how fast technology moves, that the Chromebooks are going to be able to do the job for the foreseeable future? And I just wanted to also mention that I'm really impressed with your, your socializing the kids about media and how to use it in the classroom. Because there are a number of colleges I'm aware of who do not let their students use laptops during lectures. And it's a policy campus-wide. And so when our kids go to those colleges, I think they're going to have an adjustment. But not the kind that they should. But they'll have an advantage because they are learning responsibility. Out there, it's not the norm. And you can get in a lot of trouble with some local colleges if you bring your laptop out during class, so.
And I have to tell you, I just finished my classes for my doctorate. And we were laughing about the fact that all of us in our classes are taking photos of the smartboards and taking notes. We have collaborative Google Docs. And, I mean, we're doctoral-level students and we have five devices running all at once. We have an iPad going. So I can't imagine going to a college where they did, I wouldn't be able to function because all my notes are online.
You're ahead of the curve. You're really ahead of the curve.
Thank you.
So do you see the Google Chromebooks?
Oh, yes. The answer to your question. The Google Chrome, what I absolutely love about the Google Chromebooks is that they are an incredibly simplistic device. There's not a lot of hardware to them. They're very inexpensive for what you get with, for them. And they're basically connected, they're internet devices. So as long as the internet is where the, we're doing most of our work in the cloud. So I think as long as we do that, although we do have apps, we, we use certain apps on the, on the devices as well. So technology, as you know, is changing every single day. So I can't predict what's going to happen in three, four years. There's probably going to be some other fabulous device. But I think these devices will certainly serve us well for a number of years. And I, I think that they're doing what we want them to do. And it's what it's also allowed us to do, the other byproduct of this, is our labs have become very sophisticated, specialized labs. So you all, you all saw the video editing lab and the sound design lab. That's no longer being used for kids to just go in and type or research because they don't need to go in for that. So we have CAD labs now, which are high-end CAD labs. We have the Project Lead The Way lab, which is really, those labs can now be used for those high-end type topics that you, you can't do them on a Chromebook. But it keeps the typing and the research and the collaboration stuff in the classroom and frees those labs up to be for more specialized purposes, which is really what they should be.
Thank you very much, Karen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go back to Article four, item four?
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm going ahead in a 4.25, I guess. I just, I received a couple of letters today, inquiries about Reach and the multi-age class. So before Teresa goes and gives you some information about that, we have currently six students on a waiting list for Reach and one student who is a staff member's child.
On the waiting list?
On the waiting list. Two of those students are age-appropriate for kindergarten, but the parent doesn't want them to go to kindergarten. Ally and I have been working with Bob to see if we can do a little rearrangement of our Reach classes at WPS and maybe be able to accommodate them. So we're working on that. So I just asked Ally to just talk about quickly our plan. And again, it is, we are, it's logistic. We're working on it. but, um, we understand that we have a couple of kids on the waiting list.
Right, so right now we have thirty-one students that are in the program, um, with two additional students that will eight, turn three years old through the Birth to Three system and will be, will get a spot in our program if they continue to remain eligible for special education come the next school year. We also have, right now, two students in the Child Find process. They're two four-year-olds locally who we are evaluating to determine eligibility for. So that sort of puts us to thirty-five students, possibly, because if you are found eligible, you have a place in our preschool. Of the thirty-one, so going back to the thirty-one, of the thirty-one students who have, who are signed up and have been told they have a place in Reach, fourteen signed up for the extended day and seventeen signed up for the nine to twelve. Um, there are six students locally from the towns that are on the waitlist and one staff member, a child, on the waitlist. Uh, since right currently our structure is, is that two of our classes, our two classes, have students that both stay till noon and also students that leave at two. Uh, so the only way we could accept more students is that we would keep the fourteen extended day students and put them all in one room and have one teacher responsible for the extended day students. And then we would take the other teacher and we could work out two half-day sessions. Uh, it's not something we considered doing last year, but it's something we could consider doing this year based on the number of students on the waitlist. So we're exploring those options. I've had conversations with Ms. Judd. Uh, Bob and I and Pat have been talking about how to make that work because it would be busing scenarios, different busing scenarios, different, a different structure. But it's a way to do it.
So that's...
Well, and if I'm right, Judea Nursery School, which is just right up the hill.
Yes.
And Ally has been aware and working very nicely and the entire Reach group has always included our teachers in Child Find. And the other way around, our teachers recommend to Reach.
Absolutely.
Um, that we have space available and though we have tuition, we have a very aggressive tuition scholarship program. Because I mean, obviously we want to see all these kids in some kind of pre-K.
Yes.
And in fact, our program is from two years on, not two years, ten months. So it's kind of a hand in glove. It should be a hand in glove, I'm hoping.
Ally, you put me, uh, I'm trying to follow what you were saying. You said you had fourteen in extended day now, seventeen from nine to twelve.
Yep.
And if I'm following what you're saying, the total of seven on the waitlist, if you added those to the seventeen, that would be twenty-four and have two half, I know you're considering it, two half-day sessions.
Right.
But the seventeen now, okay, the seventeen now are half-days, all right. Now?
So that means that's, the seven go with the seventeen.
Right.
Those seven are, they've all, they're on the waiting list for full day or half-day or haven't got that?
We didn't, we, we offered, we did a lottery without asking who wanted what. So then, once we accepted a certain amount of students, we then asked them what they wanted. So the seven people that were not accepted, we don't know what their preference is.
We don't know, but it could be, and then so that's kind of juggling with the half-day at the moment. Because you already have the fourteen who are extended days.
Extended day, yep.
So they're kind of, their choice would be half-day or bust, I guess, at this point.
The seven on the waitlist?
Yeah.
I, I guess not necessarily.
No.
I mean, I guess not necessarily. If we're going to open it up, then maybe there might be some additional, if there was somebody in there, there might be additional spots for extended day. We have fourteen, fourteen right now in extended day. We have, in one of our classes this year, we have sixteen students. So I guess in theory, we could take additional. I guess we would just have to figure out how to work that out.
What was, what was the maximum we talked, I don't know, we did all this a couple of years ago.
There's no real maximum. We have to be real thoughtful about the students and their needs and who needs a wheelchair and a stroller and mats. So there's no real maximum. It would be really hard for me to tell you what that was. But best practice is thirty-five square foot, feet a child.
So that turns out to what, in terms of number of children in the space?
Over twenty, twenty, twenty-one.
It could be about twenty.
Done, um, measured.
But that's not accounting for students who might have apparatus and equipment.
Right, but didn't, didn't, I just, I don't have all the documentation. We went over this two years ago as far as moving Reach from here to WPS.
Last year.
There was a lot of talk of, just one last year, there was a lot of talk about how it would work as far as we really weren't adding cost because we were just utilizing our staff better and putting them in a, in a more appropriate space. And then we talked at that point about what would happen if the number of, and at that point, we were going to be able to serve more kids because we would have space to be able to serve them in.
Yep.
And at that point, I thought there was a maximum, that we were, there was a maximum here and the maximum there was better.
Yeah, absolutely. We have, we have way more students this year than we've ever had.
Right. And how many do we have this year?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Yep, thirty-one or thirty-two.
See, that's what I thought. I thought it was like twenty-eight was the maximum here and thirty-two was the maximum there.
No, we had maybe twenty-one the year before.
Twenty-one.
Yeah.
So was twenty-eight the maximum? We're already pushing it then?
Are we already pushing our maximum?
Wasn't our maximum twenty-eight?
No, I think I told you guys that I couldn't give you a maximum because of different students and their needs. I think I can never really tell you exactly what, how many.
But I thought there was a certain number beyond which we needed to hire more people.
Oh, we don't want the ratio to go more than one to ten.
One to ten.
Right.
So that's what I'm saying is if we're looking at fourteen, if we're looking at a grand total of, oh, it's hard to keep track here. We have, what is it, fourteen plus seventeen plus seven, right?
Yep. We have, we have two teachers and two pairs.
Which would be thirty-eight.
So we would say one to ten.
It still works, yeah.
Taking, except, taking into account their special, perhaps special needs.
Right.
Special situations.
Right. Now, the only question is that I've been, you know, I brought this up in a letter, the three of us did, is that we're dealing with the space considerations and, you know, population size considerations in Burnham as far as our K-class.
Yep.
So I was wondering why we haven't considered having a number of these extra kids who are age-appropriate, and certainly when you're talking about busing, you've already mentioned the transportation issues, having a pre-K K-class at Burnham, which would utilize that space and be able to have a combined class of four or five kids.
I guess for me, you know, it's our integrated preschool and so the reason we have our preschool is for, to make sure that we're meeting our obligations around special needs students. I would want our preschool students to be having a shared experience in one location. It's more able to be serviced through our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, our speech pathologists, to have everything sort of self-contained in one place. Makes better sense to me.
Right, but isn't there, isn't there a trend now towards pre-K? You know, pre-K will eventually become standard. And we've kind of been working on that by expanding Reach to be able to provide pre-K for more kids. So wouldn't it be advantageous for the, you know, as we expand, not just being Reach, but regional pre-K, to have it eventually expand to Booth and Burnham as well? And isn't this a good opportunity to start there?
I guess I sort of still feel strongly that it should be combined in our one program. We have our playground that's appropriate, we have the setting that's appropriate, and we have the team of teachers that are together, sort of, they work, and we have one of our teachers here tonight, they work together, sort of side by side, collaborating and making sure there's shared experiences and shared work between the two groups. So I feel like if we can appropriately fit them in our preschool where we have it now, to branch out in the moment doesn't make a lot of sense.
Well, I mean, we have room at all three schools. If we were going to, if this board says, "Well, look, reestablish the old-fashioned Reach where we have just some identified children and some mainstream children to fit, and then branch out and fill up the empty spaces." We have thirteen, well, according to this, thirteen kids in kindergarten course in Washington. Obviously, we have four in Burnham, ten in Booth. And we could just then say, we could salt the whole school system out, forget pre-K, and have a pre-K K in each school, or a pre-K in each school. But we've made the effort here not to do that. And then you're talking about four different locations of very young children, some of which might have those special needs, so we'd have to reinstitute the old Reach. In other words, I don't know if anyone's following me, but it's like all of a sudden we're going back to old systems. Um, but we're adding grades in individual schools. Obviously, if we were going to do this, the other two schools should have the same program. And I'm, I don't think that's wise. I think the centralized system seems to work.
Right, I mean, if you come down and take a look, it's beautifully set up. It's, it's perfect. I mean, I don't know if, Anne, you wanted to speak a little bit because this was, do you mind if I let Anne talk a little bit about just the transition to, to WPS? Because I think it was a change for everybody, then the teachers, and I think that it would be nice to understand the setup.
Sure. Hi, I'm Anne Westcott. I'm one of the special ed teachers at Reach. And I just wanted to, first of all, thank you for supporting our move to Washington primary. It's been a really great experience in the fact that we have new learning opportunities. We have PE, we have music, we were in the spring concert. It was really fun. Um, we've also done things with other, the other grades. Um, we're, we're actually helping the fourth graders set their trout free in the stream. And then we did a planting project with grade two. So it's been, um, so many new opportunities. And it is great that we're together because we've also mixed up the groups across the classrooms. So that's been good. Um, it's been positive. And I just wanted to thank you for your continued support of Reach.
All right, thank you. Any questions for this lady? Or, I'm sorry. Susan?
PTOT speech goes to all three elementary schools anyway, correct?
Yep, yes. A different, oh, different speech pathologist.
The fourteen extended day students are not all identified. There are a mix of identified and typical peers, and they are tolerating that longer day.
Yes, they're doing beautifully. They're still running around the playground at one o'clock?
Do we know for the students who are on the waiting list where they come from, what the breakdown is? What town?
Four from Washington, two from Roxbury, and two of...
And staff members.
No, I'm sorry, the other way around.
No.
Am I correct? Oh yeah, it's incorrect. Four from Washington, two from Roxbury.
Okay. Um, and the two half-day, uh, if you do have the two half-day sessions, then, um, there would have had to be some consideration for the additional busing.
Right, right, we would, right, we have to do that work.
Okay.
Michael?
I just wanted to say that I think in general, I'm speaking for all of us, that we're big fans of Reach on the board and I think you're doing a fabulous job. And I think that the move sounds like it's been beneficial to, to Washington. Um, the letter that we, the three board members from Bridgewater sent out was not to try to create, recreate Reach in two locations. I think that would be foolish. Um, and I agree with your idea that keeping it centralized makes a lot of sense. Um, the, the program that we're proposing would not be a, a Reach program at Burnham. It would be a pre-K program at Burnham. In fact, the students that you mentioned that are on the waiting list, none of them are, are special education, special needs students, correct?
But not on the waiting list, no.
Right, and in fact, they would be automatically...
Not allowed to be, right, not allowed to be on the waiting list.
Guaranteed a slot, right?
Absolutely.
So we're talking about pre-K students without special needs that, that we're proposing would, would go at Burnham.
But what would you do with Burnham residents that might be special ed?
That might be special ed. I think they would still need to go to the Reach program even if that's what the, the best place for them would be at Reach.
That might be challenging to sell to a family member that's in Bridgewater and there's a preschool there.
But it's not a, it's not a Reach preschool.
Right.
It's not a special ed preschool.
Well, what is it?
Can I just put in just one thing?
Preschool, basically.
We do not have a teacher for this, this position. There is no teacher, so.
I, I think you have to be careful about not allowing...
There's no teacher.
Not allowing a special education student into a preschool that you have in their building. You can't say it's not a Reach preschool. I don't know how you would be able to tell a parent in Bridgewater that even though their student has special needs and you have a preschool there, you won't be servicing them. They have to go somewhere else. I think that's a question to consider. Well, I...
So are you, can I just ask, because I'm sure there are larger districts, like Danbury, for example, that has, have many more special needs students. Um, and I imagine that they have pre-K Reach-like programs in a school like Danbury.
I don't know. I don't know too much about Danbury.
Um, but I would, I would imagine that they must also have their programs centralized. In other words, they may have other pre-K programs.
I can speak to Watertown because that's where I was and we had ours centralized, in, in one location.
In one location, for all of your pre-K students. But Watertown might be small enough that they could do that. I'm not sure of larger towns.
Thirty-five hundred students in the district.
Oh, so you're saying it was centralized all pre-K and not just centralized Reach-ish and, and individual pre-Ks in any of the schools?
There were no preschool, well, there was, Watertown is different because Watertown has a pre-K two, three, five. So there was nowhere else for them to be except the pre-K building, but we had them all in one spot there. So I don't know, I think you would be, you need to be careful about having a preschool there and saying that if you have special needs, you have to go to another place.
Jen?
I guess also too, I'm trying to figure out the age difference. So if you're looking at a pre-K K classroom, are you talking about potentially three-year-olds being in a classroom that would be with possibly six-year-olds in a, because kindergarten is, kindergarten is six.
We did start the year with a few two-nines this past year. And, and we had some turn five in pre-K in January. I think even the end of December. So you, you have that range. So I mean, I guess in a kindergarten classroom, you certainly could have somebody turning six.
Right.
Yep. And then our, our students that are preschoolers have to be three by, by December 31st.
And then, so they could start even at two, two-nine, two-nine.
Go.
What I don't understand, I definitely want to make my commercial for Judea because we have room.
Yep.
And we offer scholarships. And, and we have a lot to do with, uh, you know, our administration region twelve. But what I don't understand is if we have kids on a waitlist and purportedly, I guess, maybe they are not from Bridgewater, then we have to take these kids under what's being proposed and transfer them to Burnham even though they don't live in Bridgewater just because they're on a waitlist. What happens in the next year? And the next year after that? And whenever there's a waitlist, we have to, to scramble kids according to their hometowns? I'm not getting that, unless we do it across the board. And, and then if this board wants to do that, have a pre-K at each and every elementary school and then reestablish Reach as a standalone, but that's not something we should be doing.
No, listen, what we're required to do is have an integrated, we're required to have an integrated preschool. We're not required to have a preschool. We're required to have an integrated preschool and to offer that. We're mandated to give it to three-year-olds, you know, and on. Uh, so it wouldn't be like there would be an old Reach somewhere and preschools everywhere else. There would be Reach across the board.
Right.
So you have three levels.
Yeah, I just want to say that I've had an opportunity to, uh, to be in Washington primary and to see the Reach classrooms and the whole operation there. The neat thing about it is, is unlike the facility here at Chappaq that it previously had, it seems to be scaled more to the size and expectations of the kids. It's a much better scale of it over there. I can tell you that those kids were engaged, and I mean seriously engaged. Uh, it was, it was a great thing to witness and, and they, they really had a, had a, it was a good sense of the classroom being under complete control and yet kids.
Lots of kids.
Uh, and doing, doing their thing. So maybe it was an illusion of control, but I will tell you that...
Oh, it's definitely controlled.
I, I will tell you that, that, that the kids seem to be having the time of it. They seem to be engaged in the learning. It wasn't just engaged in the interacting and playing, but it was interactively engaged in the learning. My brief, you know, visit was, I was very impressed with the way you've set it up and the way it's integrated in that school, the way it functions, so.
And Anthony do wonderful work and Emily has made it really, them feel very much a part of the school.
I just have a question, back to the extended day and the nine-twelve day. Does, um, I'm wondering how that breaks up with three versus four-year-olds? Are most of them...
We have mixed classrooms. So it really depends. I don't have the breakdown for you. I can get it. Although, you know, we were surprised this year that many three-year-olds did the nine to two.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it would probably half and half. In Anthony's room, I think more four-year-olds do the, the extended day and in Anne's room, more three-year-olds do the extended day.
Oh wow.
So there are three-year-olds stay until two.
So it's not ending up being mostly threes?
Nope.
Okay, interesting.
Nope.
Susan?
I do believe that a parent with a child with special needs would want that child to be in a classroom with a special ed teacher and the like. Not necessarily expect, um, the school to reinvent the wheel and to move and, and create a special ed program where there currently is none, I suppose.
The mandate is homeschool. The mandate is to try to keep special ed students in their homeschool. Right? So if a parent wanted to have their child at Burnham because they lived in Bridgewater and they knew we had a pre-K, they'd have a pretty good argument for us getting a special ed teacher there.
I have heard for many months now that we need to think like a region. And I'm starting to lose that thread in some of, some of the conversation. We are a region and you are required to, we as a region are required to provide, um, a, a program that meets the needs. And we're a region, so someone with special needs, the, the program is, is well-suited at the Reach program in Washington. Um, at, the, the, the letter and the, um, the, uh, the beginning of the discussion of the pre-K to K class addresses the space that is currently available. Um, it addresses a lot of very salient points, but perhaps you can walk us through the developmentally, or the developmental targets of preschool and kindergarten and first grade, if you could, as an educator?
Not ready to, no, no. That's not what I prepared to come tonight to talk to you about.
Um, you do, you were talking about different, talk about the preschool. Because, right, you were talking about the, in terms of the preschool level, what are the targets?
So you want me to talk about the curriculum?
General, general, general?
Sure, we work on cognitive, pre-academic skills, we work on play-social skills, we work on social behavioral skills.
Attention to task, cleaning up after oneself, right, the task closure.
Self-help.
Okay, all right. My point was really going more toward how different kindergarten is from first grade and how much more similarity there is between... and how much more similarity there is between pre-K and kindergarten.
Well, what I could...
I mean, at some point, we need to talk about what is...
Well, after Ally sits, Teresa's going to stand up, and she's going to talk about some of our preparation for our multi-age class.
Okay.
K1 at Burnham School, which is what I gave to the board on March 10th, which was passed in the budget, and that's what I'm moving forward with. So that's my plan, unless the board tells me differently.
Well, again, if I might, because I think I still have the floor, thinking like a region, you know, addressing the, you know, the needs, we hear again about the availability of the space at Burnham, you know, I think the concept is one worthy of some consideration, specifically because we do have kids on the waiting list, we've got a number of kids on the waiting list, and they don't have special needs.
Sure. But I think it would be a hard argument to win, that you're offering a service to general ed students, and you're not allowing special ed students to access.
As illegal?
It would not be optimal.
I understand, but I just think that's not a fight you would win.
You mean as illegal matter?
Right. Because I think I would take, yeah, absolutely.
All right, Darren?
Well, why don't we just park the curtains and tell the truth? Because basically, this is all about, this letter, it says over and over and over again, something contrary to region. Let's use Burnham, let's create a balanced region with Burnham, let's get more people in Burnham, let's do this for Burnham. No, 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 forget the kids, it's about artificially enhancing a population in Burnham that doesn't exist, as we know right now.
It's about a...
Four of these, I have a floor, we have four kids that aren't living in Burnham, but just because you guys want to artificially increase your enrollment, you're going to bust these kids purportedly to Burnham and set up a whole new classroom for the benefit of Burnham, not for the benefit of the kids, not for the benefit of the...
We were just talking about a consolidated school, we're still talking.
I'm still talking. And, and that's what this is all about. Come on, guys, we know that's what this is all about, to absolutely start getting a magnet of kids in Burnham, because your numbers are low. Well, what's best for the kids? And may I remind everyone that we have a deficit in the kindergartens of all three schools. So either this board votes to disband the pre-K that we have established in one school, and have it in three schools, and then a subsidiary REACH program, an old-fashioned REACH, or we just keep on with what we're keeping on? Because this is pretty damn obvious, just a way to artificially, what, truck Washington kids to Burnham, because you want four more kids? I'm not getting it.
We were just talking about a consolidated school.
Yeah, well, fine, but you're talking, you're here about Burnham, 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 not kids.
All right, okay. Kelly?
Let's be brutally honest on one other point too, and that is that the REACH and the preschool program are being run at the Washington Primary Schools. That is a very attractive program that enhances that school a great deal. It was moved out of Chappaq, it was moved to the Washington Primary School, and you cannot deny that that's an extremely attractive benefit for...
You guys voted for it a year ago.
For Washington and for that elementary school to have. If we're going to move ahead on the demographic challenges that face us, we can't be inflexible. We have to look at the options that are best for education for these kids. I'm concerned that some people are going to take the great benefits that they've received, and they're going to deny any kind of benefit to potentially others in the region, and maybe, you know, in order to dissuade them from considering that they made wrong choices in the referendum perhaps. I'm afraid that we're going to see a real inequity.
All right, please, please, one more time.
I'm afraid we're going to see a real inequity. And if this board doesn't set aside its feelings and its prejudices, we're going to really impact the education of these kids. We have to solve the problem of classes that are unbalanced and too small. Now, that, Washington has a fabulous program up at WPS with the REACH program and the pre-K, but let's show some largesse and try to be generous to the other predicaments that are out there. Or perhaps that program should cycle around every year.
Well, Ally just told us that they're looking at this thing, there's some issues that they have to examine, and I assume they'll be back, is that fair to say?
Yes, June 2nd for a meeting.
June 2nd, Jen?
Well, I just, I, I know that Greg and, Greg has seen the REACH program at Washington Primary School, and I actually would love, Kelly, if you would, and the rest of you would, because I think, again, if you looked at where they are, it's really location, 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 in terms of the classroom, not where it is. And again, you know, REACH is in Washington Primary School, but it's not Washington's program. All three schools go there, just like, I mean, all three towns go there, just like they did at Chappaq. And so, this happens to be the old wing of the kindergarten class, we've got two classrooms together, bathroom right off the playground. And again, I think it's about consistency, I think that's what we have to remember. And I think it's important that when we look at everything, that we're not trying to claim something. It was passed there two years ago, I know that this last year was the first year, and if, and if Burnham or Booth had had that same kind of physical location set up, then that would be the ideal choice, I'm sure they would have sent them there. So again, I agree that, once again, we're in this place, but let's not try to pit each other against each other. It's there because of the location, I welcome anybody to walk through and see it. And you cannot deny that the setup is ideal for it, genuinely, that's it, that's it. And so I just worry, and I, I'm totally in agreement, when I hear everybody say, if the REACH program is getting bigger, we shouldn't put them on our waiting list. I totally agree, and I think it's something that we should look at, because if this, if this is growing for me, the fact that there are seven on this waiting list tells me, something's right, and it's working.
Once who are on the waiting list are not REACH?
No.
Everybody's REACH, because I think there's like consent.
We're not differentiating, every student that's on the waitlist is for the REACH program, so something's working. And I'm with you, I think we should grow it, wherever it may be in the future. I don't think it's healthy to keep transplanting them, I know that it just took one year for Ms. Westcott to get used to the transition, and to move them from one thing to another, I think isn't really in the best interest of the students or the teachers. So wherever it stays, it should stay. So if there's something down the road, three years down the road, or two years down the road, if this thing continues to grow, then we should look at another opportunity to grow it, wherever that may be, so be it. But it should be under one roof, not differentiating between who's special needs and who isn't that, to me, that's a problem.
Before we get into a debate, which I guess we can do, well, Ally, do you have any other thing that you need to say? Would you stay in attendance in case there's questions that you can answer? Susan?
I don't think anyone is questioning REACH's specific locale, I think the letter very specifically addresses the kids who are currently on the waiting list. I think that there's a need to address the fact that there are children out there who want to go to a preschool program, and that may very well, that could very well be implemented, and we could meet their needs, so we don't lose these kids to any different school system. I think it's a reasonable question.
And I think, and I think maybe it's, we're being too specific about the seven on the waiting list. I think, if you think about more generally, in terms of there being seven too many kids, if there are, because the waiting list is Washington-Roxbury, it would involve, we're talking about the space at Burnham, if we really want to provide a pre-K experience to more kids in this region, involving bringing more kids into this region, then we could see if there are seven kids, or six kids, or however many kids, who are perhaps from Bridgewater, who perhaps are not special needs kids, who could be educated in their pre-K years in, with a kindergarten class. So REACH would still be here, but it would free REACH up to not have to deal with these scheduling issues that clearly, I don't understand how they're going to do this, if you have two half-days, you have to like tell some people they're going to be morning, and other people are going to be evening, I mean afternoon? Because we have 24 kids supposedly, and for half-day. So it would alleviate the stress on the, on the current REACH system by pulling six or seven kids out and putting them at Burnham, and they obviously wouldn't be the six special needs kids, and they wouldn't be six kids from Washington if possible, they would be six pre-K kids from, from Burnham. And if they're four years old, that's perfect. But let's look into that, see if that's possible, without blanketly saying, no, no, we can't do that, it's not going to happen. Okay, Greg?
At the risk of lengthening what is already in the terminal discussion that's going absolutely nowhere, as we had presentation, part of a presentation, we've now sat and debated the issue to the point where we've covered this every same topic three times. The amazing thing is that I didn't do that.
That is amazing.
But I will tell you, at this point, I would bloody well like to hear the rest of the presentation, if there is one, I'd like to move through the agenda and get out of here at some reasonable time, because there's nothing on the agenda tonight about taking a vote on this issue, and therefore, can't we just hear the rest of the presentation to finish the educational meeting and not have a contentious meeting tonight about this? I don't think anything's going to change as of tonight.
So who else?
I bless the peacemakers.
Susan?
I'm just not interested in walking away without additional discussion and, you know, the K1 merge go through, because again, I know Teresa will provide some information and input as to the developmental appropriateness of all of that, I do believe research is out there that says pre-K and K make more sense, you know, and we have, we have space and we have kids.
All right, Michael?
I just want the board to think about, too, the fact that universal pre-K is not something that's outrageous and new, I mean, all you need to do is just do a quick Google search. The state of Illinois in 2006 passed a program for pre-K three to five, so that all parents, and I think it's something like 90% of parents take advantage of that. I doubt that every school in the state of Illinois must service special education students. So my, my assumption is that they do, particularly in larger districts, have centralized locations that service special education students, and they're probably integrated with regular education students, much as they would be in later grades. However, there are probably also pre-K, simple pre-K programs, particularly in smaller districts, that are being offered to parents. I think that's what we need to start thinking about as a district, I know that for the state of Connecticut, that might be unusual, but nationally, it's not unusual. I think, we just had a presentation on Chromebooks, and this board took a very progressive stance, providing our students with that technology. I think this would be one more step that would be moving in the direction of trying to provide for students and providing for families. So I thought that was what we're all about.
I want to move on to Teresa, but I want to ask you a question, Michael. So as far as I understand, what the request is in the letter that came from you and Alan and Susan, I'm sorry, is to combine the six or seven on the waiting list with the kindergarten in Bridgewater, which would mean a first-grade class of six, interesting?
First grade class of seven.
So it would be the current kindergarten, which would be five, plus seven would be twelve.
In pre-K K.
Pre-K K.
First grade would be a class of seven.
Right.
That's what you're proposing. All right, Teresa? Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I do have a handout that's being passed around, I was really excited to present, because I found some really positive information regarding multi-grade classrooms, and the night started off so positive, I'm like, this is just going to go great, so I'm hoping that we continue. Deviated slightly, but I'm hoping that you'll find this information helpful, because my purpose this evening is to provide some information that I've found, and our next steps to ensure that the teacher has the training and support needed to make this a very successful learning environment. First of all, there are lots of multi-grade classrooms out there, we actually did reach out to schools in Connecticut, and there is a list on the back of the handout indicating the current schools that do have lots of different configurations for multi-grade classrooms. In the research, there was no research that I came across that indicated this configuration is better than that type of configuration, there is all kinds of configurations, it just means we're blending the different ages and multiple grades together. But there are some real positive potentials with this type of environment. As you folks superintendent say in the past, that it is likely that in the future, we're going to have more multi-grade classrooms. So the opportunity to broaden a student's social environment, broaden their perspective for classroom buddies or friends, broaden the potential for team teaching, where there will be multiple teachers in that learning environment, these are things that we will consider in the future, based on the decreased enrollment. Currently, I do have lots of resources, and I've listed them there, the ones that I have come across. The most important, that the teacher and I and Mrs. Cole will sit down together and really discuss and study, has to do with the multi-grade classroom, there is a series of seven books, specific for small rural districts. So we are going to use that resource to help us, so this is all in the works. We are scheduling site visits to locations that are in the back of that handout, so that we can leave at the end of the school year already with a comfort level that we are on the right path, and that this will be a successful learning environment for the students.
Teresa, I don't know if you're aware of this, but you know that this district has had multi-age classrooms in the past.
I have heard that.
When Booth preschool was a grade one to eight, the first and second grade were combined into one classroom, and the third and fourth into another, then each of the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth had their own, fourth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth had their own, one and two, three and four, and then five, six, seven, eight had their own classrooms. So we actually do have a history of this in the region, apparently it worked quite well. So I don't know if you have any resources available to you, based on the last experience, whether, if the records go back that far. But it's not that long ago, because there are people that live in town now that remember they were in those classes when they went through that school, 60s.
Kelly?
In my experience at Booth, we have multi-age classrooms at present, kindergarten can have four-year-olds and six-year-olds. So the interesting thing about multi-age classrooms, to me, is not that we slot kids by numerical age, but looking into future, to moving them into learning groups according to abilities. So that if you have a kindergartner who's great at math, they can move into a math...
What you're talking about is flexible grouping?
Yes.
And that is one of the features indicated with this model. So absolutely, and we need to stay true to the Common Core, that's a whole new initiative, so there's a lot of exciting opportunities out there, and we just need to make sure that everything is grounded well in the class for all the students. Yeah, so definitely, yes.
Because I think that if you do that, you'd find a lot of acceptance, because if a child has to spend more time on a subject, who really wants to move ahead, the parent, who might be the same parent for different subjects, depending on the child, I think they'd be very happy with that. I've never understood why, in a small learning environment as we have, we don't have individual learning programs for every student here. It would seem to be not that much of an extra step to take. So if we, if we go to the point where we can assign students to a group of learners by their abilities, and we have, moving with the Common Core, the curriculum that they've moved through, and they can, they can work at a third-grade level and first grade, or they need a little more help in math when they're in third grade, and they need to, you know, work with a different group.
That is a benefit, because you can accelerate within the means and not just be restricted to just what's that grade.
Right. That would turn our buildings into dynamic learning environments, I think, and our small size would help us, instead of interrupt.
That is true.
Are we going to look at that as well?
Superintendent and I have had those discussions.
What's the, you say in the second check, my potential opportunity for team teaching?
Yes, that is when there is more than one teacher in the configuration, I came across other configurations that are more than just K1, it could be K1, two, and there are multiple teachers in that learning environment.
Isn't there, isn't there very often though, when even with K1, aren't there multiple teachers, because you're dealing with two different curriculum almost?
Not because... Not because of two different curriculums. Many times it has to do with the numbers of students. But we are looking to at least have some additional support in the classrooms that would be another adult. So we haven't mapped that out, but that is another intent that we were talking about.
Because you'd need to have that, wouldn't you? Especially with, because the other thing is, is it on here, your first Lebanon elementary school has its one, two and three floor?
Yes.
They used to be K-1 or are now, but next year they won't be.
I, I only have what they have right now. I don't have the detail that you're describing.
Well, they just made the change because they were, they were finding that the Common Core would make it very difficult to teach K-1 in, and I'm not sure what these other schools who are currently K-1 are doing. But that it's very difficult under Common Core and ESPEC to be able to manage a K-1 merge.
Well, that's why we're starting now to make sure we've got a plan in place. And we are purposely going to visit the K-1 schools for sure, the ones that do have that configuration.
But you should check with Lebanon.
Absolutely.
I think, I think they're, they're, they're moving away from that configuration. Because I think it depends on having, you know, two full-fledged certified teachers in the classroom. Because very often, and I, haven't you found, you know, I, I read a lot about this a couple of years ago. We had the last multi-age thing. Is it, you know, the big caveat is always, you don't do multi-age to save money. You do, you do it mainly for either, you know, social regions or for educational reasons. And those always have to do with population very often. And that in order to combine even a small number of kids of two grades, you still need to have two teachers for two grades because of that, of that, that aspect of it. And I think you just pay close attention to that when you go into these other schools. Because that's what I always thought was, was the big danger from when I always understood is that there are a lot of people around here saying, multi-age will never work. But then there are a lot of people saying, well, it does. And what was the distinction? The distinction was that when it was, when it was put into place for something other than to cut staff, that's when it worked.
I completely understand. That's why I would be very conscientious to make sure that the decisions that are made really do benefit all the students in the classroom.
Right. Because that's, that's one of the things too, we need to fall back. That, that FTE, from what I was told in, in March, on March 31st, is still available. Because the budget, the removal from the budget in this room, I, I talked a lot about not wanting to have the interventionists who might be necessary in this arrangement or the kindergarten teacher themselves eliminated a line item from the budget. And I tried to make, facilitate that that wouldn't be in the budget. It could be a administrative decision that came later. And when the board deliberated, I got the assurances that the budget would not dictate the hiring or firing of those interventionists and FTEs. So I hope we're gonna remember that, that assurance that I got. And that that would be at your fingertips if necessary, depending what you studied and, and determine about the amount of staff needed for.
We are definitely looking at having some support, another adult.
Well, you know, maybe be a qualified adult.
I'll be, definitely qualified.
I don't know, when you were doing your research, if you had access to some recent files from the district? If the board remembers, not that long ago about, this was under Dr. Storm's purview. We had an initiative where Dr. Storm was proposing a multi-age classroom for some of the upper grades at Burnham.
All three. It was all three, four and five.
Oh, okay.
But I'm curious now, not to interrupt you, but they were like our biggest classes at the time.
Yeah.
Like the big, like the summer grade right now.
Very, very big. And so there was an idea of, of trying this, but it wasn't at the lower end of the elementary grades. It was in the upper end. It was, it was in grades, I think, four and five. Yeah. And I'm not sure what the reception was at other elementary schools, but I did attend the, the presentation at Burnham and it was, it was ugly, quite frankly. And, and I know one of the points that he was making to the parents from his research, and again, I know you probably weren't, you were not, you were not the director of curriculum at that point. So you might not have been working with him on it. But what he said in his presentation was that the research that he had says that multi-age classrooms in the upper elementary grades work very well, but not as well on the lower end. I distinctly remember him saying that. So I'm not sure how that.
I didn't come across that. I indicated that, that the research did not indicate, oh, it works well with these grades, but not for these. I did not come across that at all.
Okay.
Susan?
I have to say, I'm a little concerned that the research that you pulled is, is between nine and 17 years old and it predates the No Child Left Behind and some of the standardized testing. Multi-age and blended classrooms and the like were all a rage prior to the standardized testing. And then, you know, it, it, I'm surprised that there are so many schools that currently have them because my understanding from looking around a couple of years ago was it's the standardized testing that tends to be a little difficult when you have a, a, a one grade.
We have standardized testing. We have a CMT at Capes in the eighties. So those assessments were definitely around. The newest, the ESPEC, which officially begins next year. We haven't had the time to experience it, to get some of that newer research. It's just, we can't look into the future right now.
Can you, can you tell us, what are the quality markers that you're gonna be looking for when you visit those schools with the K-1 blended class?
I think we're going to anticipate what some of the concerns might be. If there's a student, like Kelly was saying, who might be accelerated, how do you accommodate? Or if there's a student who isn't as accelerated, how do you accommodate? How do you accommodate and address apparent concerns? How did this initiative start? What have been your roadblocks? How did you overcome those? And we're gonna watch what happens in that learning environment. Because it'll, you know, it'll be an experience for us as well. So we'll know more, how to elaborate, once we experience and see what they present as far as what the children are doing in the classroom. I can only get an image based on what I've read, of it being very positive.
Sure.
I just was, it's hard for me to still think about too, because I remember being in the audience a couple of years ago. When we had the idea of flexing and I, you know, I had concerns because I had a fifth grade. Was it fifth grade? Was it eighth, fifth grade?
Fourth going into the first.
Anyway, with them and, and having concerns about it and whatever. But, and I, this just hit me and I, and I don't even know why I'm sharing this, but I just am thinking about Caroline Herman, who was just up here. And she went to Montessori school, I think, from three on. And again, she's, and I just think, you know, a lot of really, I think about how Montessori blends their grades together and I, I don't know. It's just something I didn't really think about for a long time, but something I'm thinking about now.
Kelly?
Um, you can tell I'm, I'm a big fan of a flexible school environment. I'd like to see that kind of environment implemented across all the buildings with a lot of equity. I'm a little concerned. Do we know for sure that we can, on, on the basis of equity, can we take away a kindergarten teacher and combine that classroom? If Booth and Washington are not in the same configuration, are we sure that we're meeting our equity responsibility there? If we make all the schools flexible learning environments, then that, that very big mandate goes away because we've had equity provided. But can we do that? Are you sure we can do that?
I don't, I know, if you're asking me, I, I know of nothing that would prevent what the board approved when it passed its budget. In other words, to combine.
Well, Kelly, why don't you, I was gonna say, why don't you bring the suit? And, and what'll happen, what may happen is, is that the court may decide that Region 12 has to do something different. But the other thing it might do is it might declare Region 12 on a dead issue. In other words, we're not gonna allow you to divide up on this basis. We're gonna require you to, we're gonna require you to reconfigure your, your district.
Well, that won't be the case.
I mean, what, what you don't wanna do is, if you want an unpredictable result, do not go to the Connecticut Supreme Court and ask for it. Because you'll get exactly what you don't, or necessarily don't want.
That's ridiculous.
It's not ridiculous. I'm a lawyer, for Christ's sake. I can tell you, I've read these cases and I'm telling you.
All right, okay.
You don't know what you're gonna get when you go into court. And if I have the floor, Jim, I'd like to say that, you know, I'm looking at the schools on this list. Couple of observations.
No, Greg, you don't have to, you don't interrupt Kelly. Kelly, you asked a question.
Lawyers, lawyers.
Hold on, please. Kelly, are you done?
I'm done, but I think Michelle had a handout.
All right. Oh, Greg.
Couple of observations. Number one, if you look at these towns, with the exception of the schools, I, I don't, I don't know about the Benjamin Jefferson School in New Haven. That must be a very specialized or small type school because New Haven's a big community. Similarly, similarly, the Green Acres in North Haven and the, um, the Live Oaks in Milford must be similar types of schools. But the other schools on this list are in towns that are disappearing. So my guess is, is that if you want to look to see where we're gonna be, if, if, as we disappear, I'd look at this list and figure it's gonna get added to. Because all the other schools are in towns that are, some of them are significantly smaller than any of the towns. And this union, Warren in particular, are smaller than any of the towns of Region 12. Also, can you answer a question on this, this list of resources?
What are you asking?
Teresa. Let me ask Teresa. Teresa, can you, looking at this list of resources, I mean, I'm, criticism was made that perhaps some of them are a little bit older.
It was an observation, not a criticism.
I, I understand, but I'm just, I just wanna make sure that this is a representative group of what's out there. You know, sometimes you find, and I'm wondering if that's the case, and when something's been looked into and a number of people have written on it over a period of time, that people stopped writing on that topic because they've decided it and they've moved on. Is that pretty much the conclusion you reached from your research?
That's what I would say.
Right.
And keep in mind, my purpose for coming to you was to assure you that we really are being proactive and being very active and making sure that we've got everything in place for the start of the school year so that it will be a successful learning environment.
Okay, is there anything else? Michelle?
I just wanted to say that multi-grade classrooms have been used, obviously, here in Connecticut, but in Montessori schools and in schools all over the country very successfully. And I do remember from when it was proposed before, when Ann Stulman put the presentation together, one thing she found was that what was essential is that, that it was implemented well and that the teacher was, was trained. And I think the fact that you have done this research and are working already with the teachers, the teacher and going on site visits and preparing will ensure that there's a smooth transition and that it's implemented well. And what I would say to Kelly is that if it goes well, because I'm, I'm also a big fan of individualized education plans and flexible moving because some students move at different rates, less dependent on their age and more dependent on their ability. So if it goes well, then we will plant a seed for a concept that works well and we could see more flexibility within the grades in our other schools, possibly because it's working well, not just because we're shrinking. But we will also have gone through an implementation because we know we are going to see this in other grades, whether it's in pockets here, a two-three here and a one-two over there, you know, depending on our numbers or just gradually in, in all of our schools. So I think as long as it's well researched and implemented well, there's no reason to believe it should not be successful because there's a lot of evidence that it works.
All right, anything else, Patricia?
Well, I have something else.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
One of my main responsibilities is to ensure that all the staff participate in high-level professional learning opportunities. And this year in particular, I've been able to have a lot of teachers go out from the district and benefit from Common Core-specific training through the state initiatives that they started this year and bringing in consultants and really making sure that what's happening in the classroom is the highest level caliber for the students and for the teachers. That being said, I'm excited about an opportunity for the administrators, where I'm going to take them for three days this summer to, really, it's like a seminar in Chicago. And the specific topics are assessment and how to have that high-caliber instruction. I did put together a handout for you.
How many administrators are going?
Oh, I'm sorry. This is four, three.
The six of us and Dr. Cosentino. And the reason I'm excited is because I could never do this during a school year.
Right?
I would never be able to take all the administrators and the superintendent away when school's in session. I would think that probably would be very responsible of me. But the Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development, ASCD, has this institute in the summer.
Sorry, do you have, oh, there's more coming?
Can I have one more and I'll give it to you?
Off that?
With two internationally known authors, Dr. Douglas Fisher and Dr. Nancy Frye, I included their biographies there so that you could see that this opportunity is something that we should not pass up. I had included it in my budget. Because it's, uh, many years, it's been many years that the administrators have had professional learning themselves. And I think it's very important that they not be disregarded, that we also pay attention to the needs of the administrators. Because they're in the buildings where it all needs to happen. So I just wanted to share that opportunity and let you know that for three days at the very end of July, we will be on this seminar.
Can I ask you a question? Because you mentioned the Common Core again. You know, we, we've all watched the trials and tribulations of this. Some people have tried to backtrack on it. But it does not seem that either Connecticut's not far enough down the road to have discovered the problems or Connecticut has done a much better job of implementing it than other states. And we don't seem to be having these issues.
I think the media may have given that perception a few months ago. There was a lot of negativity around it. But keep in mind, the teacher evaluation system being implemented at the same time caused a lot of angst. And so now that the governor and the State Department of Education have expanded out that accountability to 2016, I think it'll alleviate some of that tension. But I think there's a lot of misinformation out there. But the state has done a tremendous job in the very recent months, I wanna say in the last eight weeks, to put together lots of workshops to help educators understand the big picture of the Common Core.
Well, isn't our curriculum pretty far down the road to implement it?
Oh, yes.
And I, I think a lot of this, this credit, at least in our little corner of the world, goes to our administrators who have done a phenomenal job of integrating this in our curriculum. Jumped out ahead of it. I heard reports on this five years ago. And, and you guys were way ahead of it. So thank you very much for sparing us any of the possible issues that come up when you're not prepared for a change in curriculum.
All right.
Agreed. A lot of this was politics. A lot of this perhaps was kind of union-based with the teachers. But I know that there are some people who have real concerns about how we teach math. So at some future education meeting, I would love to know how are we going to be teaching math in a different way? If indeed it is that radically different, because what I'm hearing is that it is.
It is. It is. And we do have the two PD days, two consultants coming in, spending the entire two days, starting with the teachers who have the youngest children.
Yeah.
So we will absolutely come back to give you that presentation. Absolutely. Thank you.
On a similar topic, I meant to ask Ms. Scallow when she was giving her presentation. When will we have the curriculum bits that are done, that are complete, up on the website? In some kind of framework so that we can tell people what we do here and how great it is?
Mrs. Frido and Mrs. Ferrera and I have spoken about this. To put it up in bits and pieces would not be fair to parents and it would cause, it, it would just cause confusion. So once we have a framework for the whole curriculum, which is, what would you say, Mrs. Frido, about six months away?
Right.
Once we have that framework, that framework, then we will look at it very specifically with what would help to inform the parents and what is unnecessary. Like, you don't put the assessments up online and stuff like that. So what, so I would say it would be, we're gonna focus on NEAS first. So if I could say you, by fall of the following school year. Uh, you know, we've got a lot of work to do. We've got a lot of work to do. And then after we do that whole lot of work, we have a lot of work to do for NEAS. So it could certainly be sooner, but I don't wanna, I bet it's not across the side when you run.
Okay, I'm gonna answer.
Okay, we're going now to, thank you. Five point two. Kim.
All right. Provide school needs.
I have a very simple question and I hope we'll raise very little discussion other than to say yes to me.
In N.
E N, the E at the end, Anderson School, that works.
Actually, the agenda is a misnomer. I'm simply looking to name the school, what it says on the sign out front and what it says on the blue sign in the hall, which is Chapag Valley School. I think that Chapag Valley Middle High School is a mouthful. A little hard to cheer for at basketball games. And I also think that we are under the concept of one school and we take a great deal of pride in that. And Chapag Valley Middle High School doesn't exactly flow into that feeling of cohesiveness. If it's, if it's a huge controversy, I've already said to Dr. Cosentino, it's not a hill I wish to die, die on. But it is the preferred name in order to fulfill what we're trying to do philosophically and for education's purpose, to create a learning community.
Shall we have a motion? I make a motion?
Yes. What is your motion?
That we change this facility to the name of the Chapag Valley School.
Second.
All right. I thought I'd be here six weeks, six months ago with this, so.
I came when I was invited, I swear.
Is there any discussion?
You know, Anderson sounds better.
It does. It does. I'll ask it next year.
One at a time. Dr. Cosentino, do you have any concerns about removing the one near the words High School from our, this school?
Middle High School? Absolutely not. Well, we're moving middle and high.
I understand that.
Yes, I do not have any concerns.
Somebody will be confused as to know where the high school is.
No.
Anyone else? All right, it's moved in second to change the name of this building, this school, to Chapag Valley School. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed?
Done and done. Thank you, really appreciate it.
Chapag Valley School. Moving on to item six, six one, second reading policy, zero five two one, nondiscrimination equity title nine.
This is the second reading?
It is. We sort of, kind of had a first reading last meeting. So, so this policy is nondiscrimination. Everything that is in red has been added. It was updated by K because it was out of date and was not compliant with current law. You can see by adding sexual orientation, gender identity or expression, these are new classes that have been added to the discrimination law. And then if you look at the bottom, you'll notice all the legal references have been finally added to this. Many of our older policies did not have the legal references and this hasn't been touched since 1999.
Moved to accept as a second reading?
Second. It's moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Well, I mean, just in that second paragraph in red, I mean, I just want to make sure when we talk about any vestige of discrimination, blah, 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 in location and use of facilities, I just want to make sure that we are not inadvertently like not having a ladies' room, a men's room, a boys' locker, a girls' locker. And that would probably go without saying, but, curious.
Well, I don't believe that having a boys' room and a girls' room is discrimination.
In location and use of facilities.
Is anyone uncomfortable?
Well, although, you know, there is a worldwide effort now, you understand, that's underway to eliminate single-sex restroom.
But it says in requirements, in keeping with the requirements of federal and state law.
We're not sharing, Greg.
Yeah, I know, it's a worldwide thing.
Is there anything else? All right, then all those in favor of approving?
Well, you didn't answer my question, no one cares.
Nobody? Is there any other discussion?
Well, I mean, I would just say that it's, it's in keeping with federal and state laws. So this is sort of what we have to do. And it also says that the district strives to remove any vestige of discrimination. So if a, a situation were to present itself, you know, the district would do what it could to accommodate that person, but we're striving to remove any discrimination. I think it's, it's fine as it's written.
Okay.
All right, all those? Greg, if you have anything else?
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to look at, Valerie raised a question.
Wasn't so stupid after all, was it?
Yes.
Yes, it was.
No, if you're talking about separate bathrooms and locker rooms, I don't see that that's discrimination.
Well, it just says facilities, that's all, and I'm just thinking, but whatever.
Okay, no, but, but what it says is, it says, it, it limits the, any vestige of discrimination to employment. I don't think we have an issue there. Assignment and promotion of personnel, we have an issue there. And educational opportunities and services off students. So this is not restrooms, this is educational.
And location and use of facilities.
In student assignments to schools and classes, in student discipline, in the location and use of facilities. Well, you know, that is the only one that comes close. And I think it would be an awfully hard, I mean, I suppose it'd be an essence saying, sorry, but, 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 separate is not equal. And I don't think that that argument, I mean, our argument makes sense in certain classifications, but I don't think you're likely to find any court willing to wade into it. It's that saying that that is discrimination because we provide separate restrooms for men and women, boys and girls.
I don't think that's where she was going. That wasn't what I was thinking.
That's what you example that was cited.
Well, no, it's just, we're talking about different levels of discrimination in different areas and viewpoints. And one of them does say, obviously, in location and use of facilities, that's all. Obviously, we're going to trust the government not to do something stupid, ho, ho. But I just, you know, wanted to ask that question. I'm not threatened. I don't think any of us should feel threatened, but I just thought it was a bit overreaching because who knows?
I know, if I may say so, I know of no discrimination that's actually practiced by Region 12 with regard to the location and use of facilities to discriminate between the sexes other than bathrooms and locker rooms.
Yeah.
So I don't have a problem with this. We do?
Yeah.
Where?
I don't know if it's, I honestly don't think it's, I don't know if it's discrimination. I mean, yes, it's discrimination. Discrimination means the ability to discriminate amongst two things that are not the same. So I suppose that in essence it's discrimination, but I think this is a legal term of art. And I don't think that the intent was to do that. But it also says the district strives to remove. It does not say that the district shall in all cases remove. We strive to remove discrimination. We don't really consider that kind of discrimination.
Is there anything else?
Got it. Thank you.
All those in favor of approving zero five two one, nondiscrimination equity title nine policy for a second reading of the board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's moved in. All right, it passes, thank you. Item seven, new business. I know it's late, but Alan had sent me an email, I think after our last meeting, suggesting the possibility of putting an opportunity for public to comment on agenda items at the beginning of our agenda, which we previously did have. For example, we lost Mr. Wainwright tonight, who just couldn't wait through this, to address us. Is there any interest in that? I mean, I think as the chairman of the board, I could set the agenda. I could just do it by fiat. That's not how I operate, I think you know. I'd like to get the board's input on that. Peter?
Yeah, for ten years, when I was eighty-six, ninety-six, we always had the public up front. I don't know why they changed it, but for whatever reason, I think it's good public relations.
I think I said last time that my recollection of why it was changed was we were running into situations where we had numerous public comment at the beginning of meetings, which didn't delay the start of the board meeting, but it started the delay of the board. It delayed the board in reaching its business, although certainly listening to the public is part of its business. And that many of the items that were addressed by the public at the beginning of the meeting were then addressed by the board, but the public had left because they addressed us. Where it was felt that if the public comment was at the end, maybe questions would be answered to the public. That was the thought. I don't have a problem with going back the other way if that's what the board wants to do.
Where would you put it? In the future?
I guess it would be either number two or number three.
That early up?
I don't remember exactly.
Should it be public comment twice? Yeah, would it be twice?
Yeah, it would, it should be twice.
Alan?
We used to have it that it was twice, and I think it became burdensome, which is why we decided to cut one out. But I think regardless of the burden, you know, and there might be a sense, you know, in times of, I'm just looking for our agenda to see where it should go, go back. But in times of, of great public outcry, sure, our public comment's going to be more burdensome. And we probably shouldn't think of it as burdensome because that's the public's chance to address us. And when we had it before, people sometimes, as Jim said, would tell us stuff and it would be kind of moot because we were about to act, you know, in accordance with what, ninety percent of the people were talking about anyway, just a couple items down. But there are times, I think, that it would be benefit for us to be able to get at least the opinion of members of the public up front. And then also to keep the time at the end. Because in one way, we have a chance of reacting to them in, from what we hear as we go into our meeting. And at the end, they have a chance to react to us as to what we've done in the meeting. And to keep it all concise, because we know how things like to brew around our region. We asked to have these events be concise as opposed to people, you know, bringing baggage to a meeting that's been festering for a while, or carrying it away without having a chance. So I'm advocating for our, our two public comments.
Why don't we do that after four? Because we're hearing from the chair, hearing from the superintendent, and let's hear from the public.
All right, well, I don't think we need a motion on this. If it's something that the board would like to do, I'll speak to the superintendent and we'll figure out where to put it. Maybe that's a good point, I'm not sure. Is there anyone who's adamantly opposed to it?
Well, I have an issue with it in that I'm.
You have an issue with what?
I have an issue with your moving it at the beginning of the meeting. Because I think what it, what it happens is, is that it creates precisely the situation that almost always exists, which is that you have an agenda. The agenda does not, is not always obvious what's going to be covered in that agenda. And it's not always obvious how it's going to be resolved. And I think, I think what you end up doing is you end up creating a large degree of discussion prolonging the length of the meeting for everyone that's here, not just for us, not just for the members of the public who are sitting there, but for also the professionals that are out there and other people. For example, we have a room with students tonight, and you have a lot of things like that that come up. And at the end of the day, it becomes far more informed, I think, to hear the comments when they can have a chance to not just react to what their notion was of what was on the agenda before here, but what afterwards they've heard. And I don't know that I'm really interested in putting it back on the agenda twice. Remember, legally it's not required to be on the agenda at all, but I think it's important to have it. I just think it's important to have it at the time when it can create the most proper format for the board, which is after the agenda's been had and we've all benefited from the same information being presented. Tonight you have a lot of technical information being presented. And I think it's important to give people an opportunity to react to that. So I think it's better off left alone. I don't see the burning need to move it earlier and I don't think it accomplishes all the good purposes for which it exists to inform the board to do so.
Kelly?
I'm in favor of the two periods of public comment as well. You can always hold people to brief comments, Jim, that's within your authority. But I think it's important that this board, which is made up of twelve individuals who go on at length, all of us, and our public puts up with that. I think we owe them the courtesy of listening to them. We have a lot of controversial issues in this region. We have to move forward in new directions. And as we've seen, if we do not listen to our public and we don't get their input, we're going to be stone cold. So public input to me at this point is maybe one of the most critical things that we can do, having it at the beginning so that we don't disservice our public, particularly those members of the public who are parents. We can't stay till ten o'clock at night. And then having a comment at the end so that they can reflect on what we've just told them, I think is reasonable.
Susan?
I do think moving it to the very beginning of the, of the meeting, certainly before number four, would make sense. Number four tonight took a good deal of time. It would be nice to open up that, that pathway, to hear people's opinions. Perhaps they, people may want to comment on something that has happened previously and something that is not on, not on the agenda. And then commenting at the end for what has transpired during the meeting could make sense. But to move it forward, to move it up would make sense. I would like to see it moved, perhaps, right after the report to the chair.
Yeah. If it was going to happen, quite frankly, I think I would just move it to number two. Call to order, public comment. Michelle? I'm sorry, Michelle?
I'm not adamantly opposed, but I do actually prefer having it at the end because I feel like the comments that we receive are more informed. And after years of sitting on this board, having people come before the board at the beginning of the meeting to rant and rave about something and then not bothering to listen to the discussion, that, that's difficult. And I'm a volunteer too. I'm not being paid to sit here. So I feel that if people want to be a part of the conversation, it would be nice if they were educated on, on the conversation. So I've appreciated having it at the end. And I do feel that if people want to share information with us about something we're going to talk about in advance, they don't have any problem emailing us. I certainly receive emails. So if they feel that they have some information that would lend itself to the conversation, people usually share that. So I actually prefer it the way it is, but it's, I'm not adamant about it.
All right. Peter?
Just from the past experience, the problem I always find with having it at the end of the meeting is it becomes a debate from time to time and contentious. People sit here and start evaluating us and how we approach the various issues. If they have an agenda for an issue that's on the agenda, they should present it to us at the beginning of the meeting and we'll be discussing that issue anyway. Biggest problem I always found out was at the end of the meeting, people would sit in the audience waiting to see how you addressed an issue and then give you their opinion of what they thought of how you addressed that issue. So, and that's not what we hear. Technically, as Greg said, I went through this before. You're not obliged to have any consent from the public or discussion if they want to send us letters, emails, or something like that. We, the board of it in Region 12 has been very generous in that regard. So I think once is enough. And then everybody will have their side at the beginning of the end. I would prefer the beginning.
All right, anyone else? I'll take a little bit of advice, but I'm inclined to, quite frankly, put it at the beginning and eliminate the one at the end.
I think that's probably enough too. I don't really care where it is, but I think it should have to be on agenda items.
Yeah. Yes, no, I'm not opposed to one at the end.
Public comments, my, put them to comment, just.
No, I understand.
Make a comment on any board of it business.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not at all in favor of that. If you're going to open it up to any board of it, we're going to be all.
No, no, it's comment on agenda items.
I understand that.
Valerie?
In the past, we did have a protocol on the back of this kind of thing that indicated to the public that we were not going to engage and that, you know, please keep your comments on agenda items only. It was, I thought it was very nice and helpful because there were times in my many years on the board where it seemed very odd. Someone would stand up and want to have a conversation. We would sit here kind of in dumb silence. So at least if everyone knows, and also they should be reminded it should be on agenda items. And if I might, while we're doing some housekeeping, Mr. Chair, we should frankly, when we are hosting a meeting, a district meeting for instance, no one should be passing out material at our meeting except for what is required for the public to get from us. Because there's a lot of times, there's been confusion where people in the audience, budget meetings, district meetings, where individuals have passed out material and people think it came from us because it was at our event. And it can be very, very disconcerting. And then ultimately we look like fools. So you have to get control of that.
Anything else on this item? Is there any other new business? All right, then moving on to item eight, opportunity for the public to comment on agenda items. Is there anyone who wishes to address this matter?
Julie Stewart from Bridgewater. Two topics I wanted to comment on tonight. One was Kim's presentation, which I thought was terrific. And it's great to hear new ideas and thoughts and new programs that are coming along. Kim did say, or Mrs. Scallow did say at the end of the presentation, something along the lines of not getting involved with the market. the lines of not getting involved with the marketing in the towns and so forth. And I agree, it's not necessarily her job. But I would say that somebody needs to do that because I think the communities need something to sink their teeth into other than just test scores for the Chapag High School, Chapag Valley School. I'll have to get that right now. So please give that to some consideration. One of the things we've asked for, for a year now, is a simple button on the homepage that says "for prospective students," and it gives an overview of the Chapag Valley School. And just some of these things wouldn't cost a lot of money, don't need a lot of resources, but we need to do it. We need to market ourselves out to the communities besides just test scores because that doesn't work so well. And there's so many good things to talk about now and in the future, that that would be a terrific thing for you to consider and put some resources into.
All right.
Second thing, on the multi-age, I was involved with that a year ago. And the reason there's not a lot written about it now is because it's not a movement that's growing. It's a movement that's shrinking. And it was big before No Child Left Behind came along. And in fact, the state of Kentucky sort of made it their standard. So there's lots of research in the state of Kentucky about multi-age classrooms. But because of standardized testing, the movement has shrunk significantly. And it's not done anymore for educational purposes, except for in Montessori environments. It does work well. And I think Alan touched on this a little bit. It was very interesting to listen to some Montessori experts last time around, who said, "I've taught this for 25 years." I think it was a gentleman who owns Bucks Rock Camp, who lives in Roxbury. His name is Mickey something. Anyway, I taught it for 25 years. It's wonderful, but it will not work in Region 12. And the reason it won't work is because of the resources. So yes, if we were to have two teachers in that K-1 combo, that'd be terrific, but we're not. The whole reason we're doing it is because we cut the teacher. So it's not the best educational option. And the last thing I'd like to say about it is last time when we went through this process, Bruce Storm, who was then the superintendent, asked all of the parents for our input. Ann Stulman, who was then the curriculum director, gave a presentation, and the parents had a chance to give input. And the parents' input was loud and clear, "This is not the best option for us and we don't want that." And Bruce Storm, that same night, said, "That's fine, we'll do something else." So it's unfortunate that we didn't have the opportunity to have input on that. And it's also unfortunate that last time it was going to be done across the board. This time, of course, it's being done just to one school and it just happens to be the Burnham School. Thank you.
In fairness, it just happens to be the Burnham School because Burnham has these unusually low, these low numbers that we're trying to deal with.
And there's other ways to solve that.
There's nothing other than that.
Other options?
Anything else? Anyone else? Yes.
Carolyn Dwyer from Bridgewater. I guess to the back and forth that just went on, that wasn't in my comments, but we can't have our cake and eat it too. We can't say Burnham is the one that has the small number, so they're the ones that have to cut the teacher. And then also say, they're the ones that have the small numbers, so why are we going to do something special for them? Burn them, burn them, burn them, as we heard Ms. Anderson say earlier tonight. So we have to pick. Anyway, to my planned comments, three weeks after this referendum has gone by, I thought you would all be in a much more positive, creative and collaborative mood. Unfortunately, I'm seeing frowning and eye rolling tonight. And so that tells me otherwise. This conversation could have gone very differently tonight. Instead, it's my way or the highway. Why can't we simply look at these concepts and if there's one town saying it's a need, why can't we work together on that? The people at Bridgewater were very patient in the past two years until we got our say. We have really hoped for a more receptive environment now.